To the flag of the United States of America, a truly republican for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Canty?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight's meeting of the Plymouth Select Board is taking place in a hybrid format. Members of the board are joining us here in person at the Great Hall. Members, presenters may be joining us here in the Great Hall or virtually over the Zoom webinar platform. Members of the public may join us here at the Great Hall or over the Zoom webinar platform. The login information for which is included on the agenda that is posted on the town website. Members of the public may also watch the meeting on television on Comcast Channel 9 or Verizon Channel 47. Members of the public are also reminded pursuant to Massachusetts general law that any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting of the Select Board after notifying the Chair, subject to reasonable requirements of the Chair so as to not interfere with the conduct of the meeting. At the beginning of the meeting, Chair shall inform other attendees of any recordings. We are aware of a recording being made by the local scene. That is the only recording that we are presently aware of being made by anyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Canty.
Recording in progress.
First thing on the docket is Eversource presentation by Mr. Goldstein.
Ms. Goldstein. Good evening, everyone, members of the board. Derek, hello, I just saw you over here. Thank you for having us here. My name is Ronit Goldstein, and I am the manager of Community Relations. I'm accompanied by my colleagues-
Welcome, Ms. Rothstein, sorry.
What's that?
Welcome, Ms. I said, Mr. I'm sorry, Ms. Goldstein.
That's okay. You can call me Ronit. I'm accompanied by my colleagues, first, and maybe you can give away Philip Burt, who is the Community Relations Specialist for the town of Plymouth. He currently works with your town management. He works with Department of Public Works and Engineering, Public Safety, as well as Emergency Management, but I wanted to get a chance to introduce him to the board. I'm also accompanied by Doug Horton, who is our Vice President of Rates, and he will assist in some of the questions that I'll take a little bit later. I have a brief presentation before you. We're here as a follow-up to the Energy Forum that was held at Plymouth North last month. I do want to thank the Select Board Member Golden for inviting us here this evening. This was a forum that was run by both of the state reps, Lenatra and Badger, and they know that we're here this evening as a follow-up. I made sure that both of them knew. And I do want to note that we held forums of that kind, some with bill assistance, some with presentations across the state, and we did get feedback, valuable feedback from residents across the state. So I just thought I would note to help inform the presentation this evening. So in terms of an agenda, what we're going to look at tonight is the components of the gas bill. We're going to talk a little bit about what drove higher bills this winter. A couple of factors went into that, and then we'll talk about what's being done to help alleviate the situation. And then the team is happy to take questions from the board on that topic and in general.
Thank you.
Great. I do want to start by acknowledging that we, I'm personally an Eversource customer as well, so we understand the angst and the frustration that was felt this past winter, and we know that looking at the components of the bill may not help to pay the bill, but our hope is that having a better understanding of what makes up the bill and understanding how folks can go and get assistance may alleviate the situation to, you know, make people feel that they have more information. So just to sort of level set, and I'm sure everyone is aware, but just thought I'd level set, Eversource provides electric service to 159 communities across the state. It provides gas service to 122 communities across the state, and in communities like Plymouth, there are communities that are served both on the gas and the electric side by Eversource. We are a poles and wires infrastructure company delivering energy, so Eversource does not generate energy. I think that's important for folks to understand. So we can go actually to the first slide. I don't know who has, is that me? Okay. There we go. All right. So we'll jump into the components of the bill. So as you can see, there are two sides to your gas bill. The supply side is the turquoise on the left, and the delivery side is the green side on the right. So the supply side is the cost of the gas from Eversource or your third-party supplier. The price that we pay is the price that you pay. So Eversource procures the gas on behalf of the customers, and the bill is just a pass-through. There's no profit on the supply. Okay? Sort of straight, straightforward. One thing I should say about the supply is that supply rates are set twice a year, in November and in May, and if that cost to the utility goes up or down more than 5%, the utility must file for an adjustment. So if it goes up more than 5% in the middle of, between November and May, the utility has to file for an adjustment. Okay? The delivery side is a little more complex, and I'll go into the various components both on this slide and the next. So the delivery side is comprised, and I'll sort of read, and I also have some notes to ensure that I don't miss anything. Cost to ensure that the gas heating your home is provided safely while meeting state regulations, such as the cost for energy efficiency and the cost to provide rate assistance to income-eligible customers. The other piece that isn't mentioned on the delivery side is a program called the Gas System Enhancement Program, otherwise known as GSEP or GSEP in the utility world. And what that is, is the replacement of leak-prone pipes, so bare steel and other metal materials that are more likely to leak gas. The company is required to replace those, make those investments to replace those gas mains every single year in the communities across the state. So one thing, it seems obvious, but I'm going to state it, your use, your usage is what drives, how much you use drives both sides of the bill, both the supply and the delivery. Okay? Oops, I skipped already to what's going on. So let's take a deeper dive into the delivery charge. The delivery charge has four components, and I'm going to note we're looking at the gas bill. So for folks in Plymouth that have gas and electric, your electric bill is a little more itemized than the gas bill. The customer charge is a fixed monthly charge. It's associated with the administration of your account, so billing, you know, reading the meter, maintaining the meter, and the call center. So in this particular bill, you can see that it's the, it's the top charge that says $10. The distribution charge is the investments that we make in the pipes, any of the maintenance that we do in the system, the facilities, the labor, so all of those folks you see out there with the gas trucks doing the work, that line item is paying for all of that, and to, again, ensuring safe, reliable gas system that complies with all the state regulations. Revenue decoupling, and if there's questions on this, I'll let Doug take that, is a mechanism to separate utility revenues from customer usage to encourage energy efficiency and demand reduction programs. And that's the Thurnlight item. You can see it says 1002. So the, I'm going to go straight to number four, because the biggest component of the delivery charge, that green side of your bill, is the distribution adjustment. What does that mean, right? It's comprised of safety component and a public policy component. When we say safety, it's that GSEP program, so it's that Gas System Enhancement Program and other safety measures that we need to take to ensure that the system is safe. The public policy piece is, and by the way, both of these sides of the distribution adjustment are regulatory. There's statutory requirements. The state, excuse me, the public policy is a combination of assistance programs for income-eligible households, so money towards those programs, and energy efficiency programs through the MassSave, through MassSave. And that could include weatherization, so insulation. It could include heat pumps. It could include windows. There's a whole variety of programs and rebates under MassSave. And that, I will say, out of that distribution adjustment line item, the biggest component is energy efficiency in terms of the cost. Okay? I'm just going to take a quick look, make sure I didn't miss anything. So before I go to what's being done, I want to talk a little bit about what happened this winter. So Eversource, so two things happened, at least two things happened. The first is on the delivery side of the bill. Eversource went in for a rate adjustment and was, received approval by Massachusetts Department of Public Utilities, MassDPU, for a rate adjustment on the delivery side starting November 1st. Now, in November, it was warmer than usual. I have to imagine most people weren't really paying attention to their gas bill. They weren't using much. It was a warm month. Not so much when we got into December, and then, of course, we all know what January and February were like. People were obviously using more because it was colder out. It wasn't the only driver. I will say that even if you leave your thermostat at a, you know, at one temperature, say 67, 68, your system still has to work harder to maintain that temperature when it's colder out. The second driver was that gas supply in New England, there's, there's a little bit of a competition. The same gas that supplies heating to your homes is the same gas that goes to power plants to generate electricity. So when you think about supply and demand, when there's a demand, right, for this, and this area has that issue, we'll say, New England has that issue in the winter, costs went up because both the plants needed it and the homes needed it. So Eversource, if you recall earlier in my presentation, I talked about that 5% change on the supply side. Eversource had to go in for a supply rate adjustment starting February 1st. So what happened is what I'll just call in simple terms a double whammy. You had the distribution rate go up, excuse me, the delivery rate go up, so it was different than last year. One thing that people could have noticed, and then, starting in February, the supply rate was even higher. So what's being done about this? So first of all, I will encourage everyone to see if they comply, if they can be part of an assistance program. You don't have to, if you're eligible. In terms of, when I say bill assistance, there are income-eligible bill assistance programs, but they're also just different programs where you can pay installments. The utility will take monthly payments. You can have a life event that occurs that you could have paid your, your bill moving forward, and something happened, and you need to pay an installment. So it's not just for income-eligible people. Also, the, the company filed for a 10% delivery rate and immediate reduction in March and April bills to give some short-term relief on bill, on bill costs. I should note that this is a deferral. It's not an elimination of 10%. It's a 10% reduction for those two months, and that'll be collected in the summer months when usage is much lower. The third thing that happened is that the company had filed with the Department of Public Utilities for a new three-year energy efficiency plan, and with all of the attention on affordability and just the cost of all these programs, the DPU reduced the overall budget of energy efficiency through the MassSave program by $500 million. And I left this up here because it should be noted, so every three years, the utilities go in for this three-year plan, even though there was a $500 million reduction out of a $4 billion plan, right? So $5 million is a lot of money. However, the previous plan, it, this overall cost of this plan was more than the previous three-year plan. So I don't know how much of a difference, if that makes sense. I can't speak to the, to the, to the numbers in terms of how much it will make a difference. Another thing that happened is that the Department of Energy Resources, otherwise known as DOE-R, provided a, required a $50 credit for all of the utilities to provide a $50 credit on all electric bills. And this was, came from money that was collected for projects that did not come to fruition. So certain solar projects or other that didn't come to fruition, the state was giving that money back through the electric bills. So you will see, everybody is on a different billing cycle, but you will see a specific called-out line item that says $50, and it will be listed as a credit. You should see that on your April bills. If you don't see that on your bill, I would call. And the last two items, the Healy Driscoll Administration, there's a lot in the way of an energy affordability agenda. These talks are ongoing, and certainly, the Department of Public Utilities is very, very focused on affordability and transparency. I should note, before I close and allow for questions, that some of that feedback, I think I mentioned at the beginning of my presentation, that we heard from all of these bill assistance programs, is that our bill is confusing. Whether it's the electric or the gas bill, our bills are not clear. And so with all of the attention, both on affordability and transparency, and we want folks to understand what their bills are about, there's, you know, it better informs us internally to start talking about and looking at the potential for some redesign of the bill so that it makes it easier for customers to understand. And that'll be ongoing conversations that we have in the months to come to make that happen. And last, I called this out in green, but it's really going to take, you know, it sounds kind of cliche to say it takes a village, but it, it really does take a village. We have to work, Eversource, along with other partner utilities, along with the state, along with the state officials that ran the Energy Forum and their constituents and colleagues, other state agencies, as well as municipal officials, to try to figure this out, how we can make, you know, energy, the energy transition in the state of Massachusetts, do it at a pace where it is affordable for residents in the Commonwealth. So with that, I, thank you. With that, I open up to questions. I think I covered most everything, Doug, so I'd be happy to take some questions and call, phone a friend here if I need to with one of my colleagues.
Charlie?
And thank you again for the opportunity. Thanks, David.
Thank you very much. My questions are very simple. I'm looking at the $429.96 bill, and the supply, which is $140.139, that's the cost of gas from Eversource, and the price you pay is the price we pay.
On the supply side, that's correct.
The price we pay is the price you pay, so there's no profit in that.
Correct, on the supply side of the bill.
So now we go to the, to the customer charge. First one is a fixed cost, $10 for looking at your meter and whatever that cost is. Second cost is for maintenance of pipes. That's $116.86. And how do you determine that cost? That's my first question.
The distribution charge?
Yeah, how do you determine how much the pipes cost?
Great question, and good evening. Thank you for having us. Again, my name is Doug Horton. Appreciate the question. If you're looking at these, and first, for every rate that we charge or any utility charges, first has to be approved by our regulator, and the regulator goes through an extensive process for the portion of the bill that we're responsible for. This is true for electric and for gas, and this is true for any utility situated like Eversource is, is that, you know, owns infrastructure and has investors in that infrastructure. What we do is we go before, it's called a rate case, before our regulator, where we present all of our costs from the bottom up. We say, here's the cost that we need to incur to operate and to maintain the system, as well as, and on the gas system, Ronit mentioned a couple of times, the infrastructure, you know, the safety program. To be able to invest in the infrastructure and take bad pipes out of the ground, we need to be able to attract capital to do that.
And that gets passed on to the customer, the $116.86.
All of these charges, correct, are reflective of it.
So now the 1002, the decoupling-
Yep.
What's that? That's a cost to you, so the customer gets charged. What is that for?
Decoupling is a mechanism. So in terms of the infrastructure that we do operate and the portion of the bill that is ours for our infrastructure, that is highly regulated. So if we earn a penny more than we're authorized to by our regulator, it goes back to customers. Similarly, if our revenues are a penny higher than they're authorized to be, that revenue decoupling mechanism is the mechanism that ensures that it goes back to customers.
So then the last adjustment charge is $150.169, and that's for safety and public component. So that's another cost that the customer gets charged. So my question is, where's the, where's the Eversource profit? Where's, because it looks like we're paying, you're charging us for gas, that, what you're paying, and then these are all your costs. So where's your profit?
Yeah, so, great question.
In that bill for, for $429.96, that, and my bill was three times that, but what was your, what was the profit for Eversource on that $429?
Yeah, excellent question. So generally, the Eversource return or profit is less than 10% of the total bill. So I would have to do the analysis in terms of-
Where is it, where does it come out of? Where does the profit come out of in this, in these calculations?
The profit would be reflected in, I know this is, the profit would be reflected in the customer charge, the distribution charge, and then the piece of the distribution adjustment charge there, as Ronit mentioned. There's, the largest component of the distribution adjustment charge, the $151, are for programs like MassSave or Energy Efficiency. There's low-income discount support payments collected through there. Those are programs that we facilitate on behalf of the state, again, as do other utilities, that we pass those costs of the program to administer through to our customers. There is a return that all utilities earn and are required to earn in order to be able to attract the necessary capital so that we can take the bad pipes out of the ground. So that is an element of our rates. It's reflected in the costs that are, the way that the utility rates are set, it's in the customer charge or in the distribution charge.
So I think that really has to be clear, because I think everybody in this room has the same question I have. All I heard was, everything was, what they, you pay for the gas, we pay, and these are all your costs. And I didn't hear anything about profit. So it's, it's confusing to me with the profit. And I know you have to make a profit. I get that. But, you know, we're hearing stuff, you know, and you've, you know that we're hearing that the chairman is making, got an $8.8 million bonus, and in the meantime, you know, I paid, my last three bills were $1100, $1100, $1200, and I just got, this bill was $600 between the two, and I jumped for joy. And that used to be what I paid last winter, and now I'm paying this in the spring. So, and everybody's in the same boat out here. So we, we, we need to hear very clearly, you know, what the profit is, and, and I get the green energy and things, you, I think you need to really explain that, that those costs, so people understand, you know, those costs, because that's a big part of what we're paying, between that and affordability. And I get it. People need help. People need assistance. I'm all for that. And we need to have some, we need to have some green, you know, get, during the state's going to be green. So I get that. But I think folks want to know, are we subsidizing that whole thing, or, you know, the, the, the green energy, the green bill?
In terms of, well, excellent points. And in terms of the profit, it's a question that, that I get a lot, and it's never an easy answer, other than for me to say, the model, the way that this, the utility framework is such that we spend significantly more on the system each year than we collect through our rates from our customers. And so we have to be able to access capital from both debt lenders and equity investors. And the way to be able to do that is to, just like if you take out a mortgage for your home, you have to pay the bank back inclusive of a return, we call it interest, but it's the same concept for equity investors. Now, that doesn't, I don't say that to not shine a spotlight on the fact that that is a very important component. It's also a very critical role that the Mass Department of Public Utilities, one of their main functions is to ensure that rates are set at levels that are, to use the term of art, just and reasonable, to make sure that we're not earning too much, that our rates are not providing more than sufficient revenue streams so that we're able to make the needed investment. So it is absolutely a fair question and a fair criticism, and we are all about transparency and accountability. I would say, just, there is, the framework is such that if we earn a penny more than what we're required to or authorized to, to be able to attract that, that capital, it goes back to customers, and same on the revenues. In terms of your question, and, cut me off if you don't want me to keep rambling, but-
No, no.
You also mentioned the, the green energy programs, and I think, you know, look, we, we operate in a, in a part of the country where, personally, and everyone has their own points of view, I think we have leaders who are very focused on achieving a clean energy transition. We are at the end of the gas pipeline here in New England, so unfortunately, it makes my role as a person who, you know, does utility rates, I don't make any new friends, and it's a very difficult, you know, part that we're in. These are complex problems because we're at the end of the gas pipeline, which, as Ronit mentioned, that's what the market for the gas sets the rate for the supply on both the electric and the gas bills. And again, I'm not saying that to get out of any responsibility, but to solve that problem, which is more than half of the bill on the gas and the electric side, we need to have very, you know, in-depth and complex solutions. Those aren't simple, because we can't just cite new gas pipelines. We can't just build offshore wind with everything. There's a lot of factors at play. So yes, there is an initiative, you know, the state of Massachusetts has, has, I think, taken great steps and strides towards enabling a clean energy transition, and there are costs on our bills, both electric and gas, that reflect the cost of that.
With that being said, we need, we're working with the state delegation to let the administration know that, how much can the residents take? I mean, how much can they, can they afford to spend? This was a real eye-opener this winter.
It was.
It was a real eye-opener. And again, I'm, I'm no different than anybody in this room, and, you know, I've heard people say I'm appalled by it. Well, guess what? We're all appalled, too, and we're, we're working on trying to do something. But I can't all of a sudden say, I'm not using Eversource anymore-
Right.
-because I need to get my gas electric from Eversource. I, I have no other option right now. So, anyway, anyway, thank you for the information today.
Thank you. And I, if I may, just briefly on that, and the, the state is listening. I can tell you the state is listening. There is no simple solution, but we are having active discussions, and I think it does take difficult conversations, which state leaders are having. I've been a part of many conversations already where I think state leaders are acknowledging exactly what you said. You know, not only do we need to make our bill more transparent so people understand, this is not easy to understand, even for myself, and we, we get that. So that's number one. But we also need to find real solutions, just to your point. This energy affordability is critical, and people don't have a choice whether or not to heat their home or to, you know, cook their food. This is not a decision that someone can, can make. And so, you know- This is not a decision that someone can, can make and so, you know, there's no simple answer, but, but the state and we at ever source are actively pursuing any and every solution that we can come up with in the short and in the long term. So, but I appreciate you having this forum.
Thank you for coming and having the courage to come in and stand up and, because, you know, people have been really excited about this and I don't think in a good way, but so hopefully you answered a few questions, but.
We appreciate you allowing us the opportunity and giving us the forum. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, folks, for your presentation here tonight. Rooney, could you go to the last slide again?
Sure.
The, the second item on there, the 10% delivery rate reduction, this is, you said this is a temporary relief option. Is, is there going to be any interest that accrues on that reduction?
No, no, there's not. We, we made a commitment when we made that temporary relief that there would be no interest on that.
Okay.
Period.
Thank you. The, the total cost for the three-year Mass Save program is 4.5 billion now, right?
Yes.
Is that 4.5 billion per year or over the course of the three-year period?
That's over the course of the three-year period.
Okay. And if you could go back to the slide that has the, the bill. So the, the 151.69 is more than half of the delivery charge. And I think you had a slide at the forum that's, that showed that broken down a little bit more and it's, it showed that 65% of that was to fund programs like Mass Save. Is that correct?
Correct. The energy efficiency, sorry, the energy efficiency is the biggest component. Yeah, some of, some of the, we, we simplified this, part of that feedback that I think I mentioned was that so many slides and so many graphs and pie charts and it started to become confusing, which is why I kept it simple. But yeah, the energy efficiency is the biggest component. And I, just one thing I will say, whether folks want to believe in energy efficiency, don't believe, it's something we're all paying into, it's something we're all eligible to take advantage of regardless of income. And you, you just don't know until you get a free assessment of your home if your, you know, your heat is blowing out the window because the windows are antiquated or you don't have sufficient insulation. It's worth just having someone come out and tell you what you have and what your options are. It's free. That's free. So I do, I do highly encourage folks to, to take advantage of that. So.
And, and I've put in for an energy assessment before, not in my current home, my prior home. What's the, what's the wait time to get such an assessment done?
So I can't tell you off the top of my head, but I can find out from our energy efficiency folks. We have a team devoted to this, so we can find out for you. I can't imagine it's a long lead time. We want people to take advantage of it.
When I, when I put in for it, it took two years to get an assessment done.
So there's, there, I, I know that over, and I'm speaking anecdotally, but I know that there's been some criticism over the program. I know that, that there is a lot of attention on making it more streamlined and smooth and easy, easier and customer-friendly. So, to your point, David, for the two years.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it was, it was a long wait.
Yeah. I don't know how long ago that was, but I do know, I've heard, I've been part of a lot of conversations with our, especially our residential folks and, and there's a lot of attention of just really making this as easy, almost turnkey, like make it as easy as possible for people to do this.
In fact, we sold our house before we were able to get the energy efficiency study done. Who runs Mass Save?
So Mass Save, do you want?
I can, if you want. Okay.
What do you want to answer? The brand.
So, Mass, it's, the, the utilities in the state are what's called program administrators, all working together to administer the programs under the Mass Save name. The way that the process works is it starts with legislation. So there was a Green Communities Act in 2008. It has been modified over time and there was a Global Warming Solutions Act, I believe it was the first enacted in 2012, also modified over time, which set ambitious goals back to the common around the clean energy transition for the state to achieve and milestones to achieve those goals. So that the programs, while administered by the state, there's a collaborative effort with state leaders, the administration, who establishes the targets that the energy efficiency plans must set out to achieve. Then there's an extensive effort of a, of a council that the utilities sit on among, with many other stakeholders to, to come up with a plan that achieves that goal, which then gets submitted to the Department of Public Utilities. Ultimately, it's the utilities though that administer those programs.
Speaking as a member of a board and several committees in town, I think administration by committee is a very poor format for any type of program. Is there any one person, like is there a chair of your committee? Is there someone who's ultimately responsible? Because, you know, there, there are folks who are out in the field who are doing these energy assessments as an example. Who do they report to?
Sure. Well, in that, I think the buck stops with ever source in terms of administering the program. So to the extent, at least in, if it's an ever source, energy efficiency program, that would be ever source to be held accountable to the effectiveness and to the efficiency. But in terms of the program design, it is truly a collaborative consensus-based and I'm not also a part of the committee to speak with firsthand knowledge, but my understanding is that, you're right, there are a lot of opinions that are, you know, ultimately balanced in an effort to achieve consensus in terms of what should be the size of the plant, the four and a half billion plan itself, what should be the priorities in the programs, of course, operating within the boundaries of the law. But ultimately, in terms of the effectiveness and efficacy of the programs, like I said, it's, it's up to ever source, once the plan is approved, to go on and to execute programs that deliver the values that they're supposed to.
So do each of the utility companies sort of manage their own set of personnel within the communities that they serve? Is that how it works?
That's right. So we have, exactly. So there's the common overall plan, that's the four and a half billion that we're speaking to, but each utility will have their own, exactly like you just asked, they'll, will have our own, you know, specific, whether it's contractors or employees who are dedicated to administering the plan effectively and to affect, you know, producing, like I said, the benefits of the plan.
Okay. And, and that, that whole plan adds about 65% or results in about 65% of the delivery charge, is that right?
So I've seen that number being put out there, David. I, I, yeah. I mean, it's the biggest, yes, so the answer is yes.
Okay.
And it's, and if I understand it correctly, the, the, some of the driving, some of the driver for that, correct me Doug if I'm, keep me honest, is, is the, the plan itself but also the folks taking advantage of heat, air source heat pumps and other types of, you know, energy efficiency method, you know, things that they can, you know, programs and equipment over the year. So, you know, that drives the cost up.
Yeah. I'm glad you brought up equipment because I have a number of friends who live outside of Massachusetts, but who have family that still live in Massachusetts and they've taken advantage of Mass Save programs for their homes out of state. You know, things like getting a smart thermostat, for example. They get it delivered to their, their mother's house, their friend's house, whatever, and then it goes and lives in, you know, Maryland or Florida. Is there any effort to curb any kind of abuse of the program?
So guardrails?
Yeah.
I can't speak to that directly. I can certainly, I can follow up with that along with the other question that you had earlier. Actually going to write it down.
The only, the only other piece that I had was, one of the other slides that you had in the, during the energy forum, talked about sort of the future of energy efficiency in Massachusetts. And one of the graphics that was displayed showed that meeting the energy standards set by the legislature and the governor would result in a roughly two to three time increase in electric usage, electricity usage for the average rate pair. Is that correct?
So what we're anticipating, again, if every, it's going to be up to customer choice, right? So if you buy an EV, it's going to be your choice. So if we have, you know, electric vehicle EV, folks adopting that, right? Everybody's buying, if, as towns adopt stretch codes and other, you know, bylaws and regulations, based on our system planning, roughly, yeah, usage could double if not triple. Not bills, but usage.
Well, well, and the, the cost of the utility itself is going to continue to go up over the years. Like, you know, I think there are a lot of people who are in this audience who are hoping that at some point there's going to be a magic silver bullet that will bring prices down. Can you, can you address that?
The magic silver bullet? I think, yeah.
Yeah. I, it's, I wish the answer was yes and I wish the answer was simple to say that's, that's true. I mean, there are, the reality is, and I think with that slide, what we're trying to show is, if we, if we are, and we, and we are in Massachusetts, we're on a path to decarbonize and, and to enable electrification for electric vehicles instead of combustion engines and to enable people to adopt air source heat pumps instead of heating their homes with natural gas or other delivered fuels. So to do that, you need to have a robust electric infrastructure in place to accommodate that load and it's not insignificant. So I cannot sit here and say I'm expecting costs to come down. I can say what, what we're actively focused on and I know that it doesn't give immediate relief in your wallets today, but I can assure you that the, the state and with ever source and with other, you know, loud voices at the table are facilitating discussions. I'm part of a financing the transition working group. It's head up by, by the state, by the administration, acknowledging just this point. We have ambitious goals that nothing can be done for free. So how can we do this? And looking at everything, looking frankly, at the utility model, is that the way to do it? The point that I say is, is, you know, again, I fully understand and appreciate the very tough questions on the utility earnings and that needs to be heavily, heavily scrutinized. The reality is, we can't make that go away because if someone is paying for the infrastructure in advance of when it's being collected through rates, that person, if they'll, if they'll give the utility their money for free, the utility will take it and not charge our customers. But that just is not how the model works. If you're giving up, if you have dollars to invest, you're expecting a return. So it's critically important to understand that we can't make that go to zero, but is there a way that we can finance that, you know, with less expensive, and that's being looked at? But the bottom line is there's still, it's a relatively small driver of a, of a utility bill when we look at the rest of these things. And it's an efficient way to finance the investments that have been made. So the state is actively looking at though, are there better ways to do it? Are there things that we can do to take costs off the bill or just to more equitably, equitably design our rates to ensure that everyone's paying their fair share? And I think all those discussions are, are happening, but I can't sit here today and expect that rates are going to drop precipitously because there just is not a silver bullet solution, unfortunately. I wish there were.
I have one more question related to my previous line of questioning, but I want to hone in on something you just said.
Sure.
Talking about an equitable model? Are you talking about like an income stratification model?
I mean, I, I am not personally, although I think one, one of the, you know, active discussions right now is looking at, is there a way to ensure, because utility rate design is not taking into account income. We don't know it and many customers don't want to tell us. We don't want to ask. So it's not designed in a way that looks at your income. More so, it's about designing, ensuring that we have rates, and this is getting wonky, but just ensuring that across the board, customers are paying their fair share and not able to skirt certain charges that, you know, if they're still using the system, that they should be paying their fair share of the system. If they don't, those costs then get paid for others. And so that's really what I'm talking about when I say, looking at rate design, you know, ensuring that we can have our rates be just and reasonable, reflecting our costs, but ensuring that there's no free ridership, there's no way to avoid for people who are using the system, having to pay for the system.
Okay. Thank you. My last question is, so if, if rates are continuing an upward trajectory and if usage is going to continue on an upward trajectory, is it fair to say that in the next decade or so, we're going to be looking at electric bills that are more than three times what we're paying right now?
That I, I can't say and I certainly hope not. And I think that's why the state is acting now to say, we need to do something because there is no, just as, as the prior gentleman, there's no, there's no choice. You have to have a resilient, reliable electric system and gas system that serves you and we can't, we can't have rates that produce that outcome. So certainly that's not my expectation at all.
Okay, thank you. I, you know, for folks who are here in the audience, I, you know, I want to say that as, as a selectman, you know, my job is to advocate on your behalf, but we can't as a group tell these folks what to do. So I wanted this presentation to be held tonight so that you had a better understanding of what you should do as citizens. For my part, I plan to continue to work with our legislative delegation. I plan to contact the governor's office and, and let them know that we're all hurting in this community. I really encourage you folks to do the same because as you see, 65% of the delivery, that's more than double what we're paying in supply, is the result of public policy choices. So we have to make sure that we're writing to the folks who are making decisions to let them know that we need them to make better decisions. If that'll turn it over.
Mr. Candy?
Thank you. So can you go to the, the slide with the bullet points, maybe the next one or the one farther? Yes, this one. Thank you. So you mentioned earlier that the rate that's set, it's semi-annuals, twice a year, if it goes, if it increases or decreases 5% or more over that set rate, then you have to seek an adjustment. What if it only goes up 4.99 or, or less? You just charge that to customers without an adjustment or you eat that cost?
A great question. No. So on the, on the supply side, that is a pure pass-through cost. So the rate that is set is reflective of the market price for the gas that we go and we buy. And it's based on forecasts. If the, so ultimately, our customers pay that cost, whatever it ends up being, we're not, we don't own, we don't generate, we don't produce the gas or the electricity. All the, the, the way that the GPU or the Department of Public Utilities sets that rate is we set it based on a forecast and then we monitor it over the course of the winter or the summer months to make sure that if that forecast proves to be inaccurate, that we adjust rates in real time to reflect the underlying cost. If we didn't adjust the rates, it would simply roll over into the next period. But the department does that to the prior question to avoid there being interest charges in either direction that would just exacerbate the future rate change.
Okay. So several of my colleagues had an opportunity to go to the New England ISO out in Holyoke not too long ago and see the big board where utility rates through all of New England are set and there's bidding and it basically, for people that weren't in attendance, it's, there's adjustments made on a minute by minute, hour by hour. There's a forecasting of where things are and then adjusting on the fly to that to make sure that demand and supply are as close to being in equilibrium as, as possible. So I'm familiar with, with that. I'm also very familiar that ever source is a deliverer of power and not a generator of power. But you are a monopoly, you're a legal monopoly. So you don't have to compete in the open market in the same way that a, another company like Coca-Cola and Pepsi have to compete for market share. You do not. People move into your jurisdiction, you get a new customer. They move out, you lose a customer. But usually when somebody moves out, somebody else moves in. So you've got a pretty steady space of customers, correct?
That's correct, yep.
And, so you don't have expenses like research and development and you don't have, I've seen ever source commercials, but those are a choice. You don't need to advertise. People are not moving to this area so they can get ever source electricity, right?
As much as I would like to believe the answer is yes.
Right, right. So, so, and you said that, that your profits are less than or equal to 10% of the bill? So if I'm being charged 500 bucks, then you're making 50 bucks or less off that bill?
That's right, yep.
Okay. But given that you're, and what are, are you, your, your profits are reported on, what, a quarterly basis?
They're reported on a quarterly basis and, well, do you?
Go ahead.
Well, I was just going to anticipate the question, but I can, I'm happy to let you finish.
No, let's see where you go and then I'll go where I was going to go.
All right. I mean, look, this is, it's, it's a difficult hot seat to be in and it does feel like the temperature is, you know, maybe it's, if we're talking about gas bills, we could turn the heat down, saves. But it might just be my seat and I'm not trying to make light of the situation, so I apologize. But I think, so it's absolutely, it's a very good question and it's one that we get a lot. The reality is, and this is why there is no simple solution, whether it's, you know, asking about our CEO's salary or, or our shareholders' return, these are things that the regulator scrutinizes heavily. Our CEO's salary is not included in rates for the most part, if at all. And the return component is one where, like I said, the reality is for every, it's called an investor-owned utility. Every state has investor-owned utilities that operate in some degree and every state that has them has a regulator whose job it is to, to oversee and regulate with intense scrutiny for just the reason that you said, because while we are monopolies, we, you don't get to choose your electric provider or your gas provider. don't get to choose your electric provider or your gas provider. We have to compete intensely to attract that capital to serve our customers. The, the whole system is built in a way to say, we're not Coca-Cola or Amazon. We are also not risky like Coca-Cola or Amazon, in the sense that we are in, in a business to be able to attract the capital so that we can safely, reliably serve our customers. If we don't do that well, we're held to account. If we do it well, we need to be able to have that opportunity to earn on the invested capital so that we can continue to attract that capital. And just simply put, right now, based on the model, the way the whole framework is set up, if we don't have that opportunity, we don't have the ability to attract the capital. And so, that's why, these are excellent questions, and I know it doesn't help for anyone who's struggling to pay their bill, to be able to pay their bill. But, but it is, is a necessary component that the regulator's job is to ensure that we have that opportunity, but it's to earn just the, just enough so that we can attract that capital. And if we couldn't attract that capital, rates would actually have to skyrocket to be able to close that gap. Or if you're, you're attracting that capital not with equity investment but with debt, you're not talking about eliminating that 10% that I'm talking about. You can't make it go to zero. You could only make it go to what the cost of debt would be, and you can't do that with an investor-owned utility. An investor-owned utility simply can't just issue debt to pay for these things, because that's, you would be too, I'm getting way down at the weeds, but you would be too heavily reliant on debt. No investor-owned utility can balance more with debt than with equity. So, the solution would be to take over your utilities, but you're not going to eliminate the $50 if you do that. You'd make it go to 48 or 47, because you're attracting, you're then having to close that gap with debt, not equity. And that's, that's the reason, is we're not like a Coca-Cola. We're not competing with Coca-Cola or Amazon or Google to attract capital that investors are giving to them. We're competing with every other utility who's in the same boat, who has to be able to attract the capital. So, again, I know it doesn't help for customers struggling to pay their bill, for me to say anything of what I'm saying, but the model requires there to be that steady, stable stream of revenues to pay back the equity investor, just like when you pay back your mortgage. And I'd love to not pay back my mortgage either, but the bank won't give me money if I can't, if I can't pay them back a mortgage. And that's just the, the reality for us, as it is every other, every other utility.
So, I just, I understand what you're saying to an extent, but I, I do think that, given that you don't have the kind of, and I understand that as a monopoly, you're subject to regulations that a, a more free market, there's not a truly free market, but a more free market-based company would not be subject to. But I, I just, I, I see the, the narrative coming out that it's, it's a public policy issue, that, that legislators and the governor or governors and their, their policies for, for, to try and move us into a, a more sustainable energy future is the problem, and not anything that the utility
No.
Or the, or the suppliers, the, the people generating the power. Because, I mean, solar power has existed for decades. Wind power has existed since Roman times and Egypt, ancient Egyptian times, in various forms. So, this is, these are not new texts. I know that, you know, battery storage, things of that are, are more modern. But I, I just, given that you don't have some of these other external end forces on you, and that this is, this is not something that snuck up, because they've been talking about global warming, climate change since, you know, the 70s. There've been, you know, acid rain in the, in the 90s and the 80s. So, this is, these are, these are known issues that were not adjusted and, and adapted to previously. I just, I find it irresponsible to be blaming current legislators and current executive branch members above this pay grade for these issues, when really, it's a fail, it's a systems failure that has gone on for a long time and has put us in this position. And I just, I don't understand why you're, you know, you're going to get your profits when you get your profit, you're a monopoly, right? You, people aren't, you're not losing customers, because for the most part, when people sell a house, other people move in. So, you, if, if your profits went down in a quarter or for a few quarters, you're going to get that back. Those equity investors are going to get that back. I just, I find that, that that is not a part of the conversation just as much as energy is affordable, we all need to work collectively with regulators, elected officials, and customers on solutions to ensure energy is affordable as the Commonwealth pursues its unprecedented energy transition. That's putting all of the, in my opinion, that's putting all of the, the burden on the policy of moving to a sustainable future and trying to do what we can at this late hour to try and stem off some of the worst effects of climate change versus, that, that at least should coexist with perhaps our model. The reg, if, if you're saying you need, you absolutely need to be able to pull in 10% or less profit for these equity investors, that should be at, at least part of that conversation. And it's, it's just not. And I just, I find that troubling. I also, that Mass Save seems to be getting a lot of flack. I mean, so, earlier in the presentation, there was a conversation about how the gas bill in particular, I don't get gas, I just get electric. Through you guys, I have oil heat. I also have heat pumps, but electricity is energy efficient but not cost efficient to heat a home, in my opinion. But in any event, Mass Save reduces the, any house that goes through that audit, whether wait times being what they are, their individual drawdown on the grid would be lower. And was, you know, we were talking earlier about how it's not just you, if you do have gas with you, it's also the power plant providing you electricity. It's also going from the same pool of natural gas. So, it's a collective benefit to the system to have people acquire and get more energy efficient over time. It's not a detriment. And actually, that would lower people's bills in the aggregate if more people were more energy efficient, correct?
Absolutely. And that's, that's why those programs exist, first and foremost, is to ensure that, just like you're saying, they, they have a value, but they come at a cost, meaning the energy efficiency programs
Right.
Produce a value, but it's not for free that you can
Right.
Go and make your home more energy efficient.
Right. And, and, and so, because I remember when we were at the ISO, and there was, there's a big board with different power generators up there, and the collectively people, power generators, whether they own a solar farm, or whether they own a gas power plant, or whatever, are putting in bids for how much power they can supply for the next several minutes. And then those bids are routinely re-upped. And renewables, when the sun is shining on solar panels, or when the wind is blowing on a wind turbine, they would bid at zero, because they would put in whatever the gap demand was. The other things that have a, a net of, of floor of what their total operating costs couldn't do that. They couldn't bid, because then they'd be locked into, if they said they could provide a kilowatt for 100 bucks, and it actually was going to cost them 200 bucks to generate a kilowatt, they wouldn't put in that bid, because they'd be losing money. So, they'd have at, at least a bid of 100 bucks to cover their costs. But the renewables were putting in bids for free, because whatever the other suppliers couldn't put in, the renewables would, would generate while the sun's shining and the wind is blowing. So, like, that seems to be the future, to, in, from my mind, of seeing, seeing that process and, and seeing that play out. That's the way to get out of this, is not, not relying on, they talked too about the transition from coal and oil plants to natural gas as a stopgap, and then the hope is renewables taking on a lot of that burden in the future. But I just, I, I, I'm kind of disappointed that it seems so pointed in one particular direction, when I think there's more to the story than is being.
And I think that's excellent, excellent feedback, and I think we can take that back, because as, as I'm reading, that certainly wasn't our intent to point fingers anywhere, to be square. The reality is, these are complex problems, and it's going to take solutions on multiple fronts. So, you just described a very complex energy system that delivers the generation on the electric side, which, again, we procure, we pass those costs through. There are specific targeted solutions that may help make that more affordable, that won't have anything to do with the infrastructure that Eversource does own and operate and earns a return on. So, we absolutely need, and that system's going to be there, whether it's a solar panel delivering the power, or it's a nuclear
Right.
Or it's a gas-fired generator. Similarly, there's public benefits charges, just to your point, that have a value, and we're not trying to point the finger anywhere, anywhere else. The conversation this winter really started because of the fact, as Ronit said, there was multiple factors at play. We weren't explaining, and not here today explaining, again, to try to get out of any responsibility. You know, we are the utility, we are the electric service and gas service provider. We take affordability very seriously. We have to be part of the solution, and, and we're committed to doing that. It's just not as simple, is my only point, and I realize it's self-serving from you to say, we cannot expect that the solution is that Eversource will not have profit or return, or, or that our CEO's salary will go down, and that would produce any meaningful benefit to customers. That those things aren't what's driving the high rate change that we saw this winter, or the fact that we have in New England, high energy prices. The fact of our, our delivery, the infrastructure that we do own and we operate, whether it's gas or electric. When we look at other utilities across the country, our rates for delivery are in line with them. And I don't, I, I have to caveat this, because I know, when I say that, as a utility finance person, it seems very self-serving, like I'm trying to get out of the spotlight. I'm not. I'm simply trying to say that we have to be realistic for our customers, for your constituents, around what's causing these high bills, and what are real solutions? And it's just, there is no simple solution. We should look at, and we are, taking into all of the above approach. But it is not reasonable to say that Eversource's shareholders are the problem, and they need to, you know, not earn a return, and then this is going to go away. That's just not a real-world solution. It's something that needs to be part of the equation to make sure that when the regulator is setting our rates, which include a return on equity, it includes an expectation, this is how every regulator does it, sets rates that allows for a return on equity. That is one of the most hotly contested elements of what's called a rate case. So, we file a rate case, we present all our costs. One of those costs is the return on equity. So, when, when, when I'm talking about costs, I'm not trying to get out of the fact that there is a return. I own it. We have to have a return, because we have to be able to pay back equity investors. Their capital comes at a cost, so that's the vernacular that I use. So, I think we can take it back and try to, because our, our goal is to be transparent about all of this. This is, this is a very complicated topic. Most people don't understand half of what you just said about the, just because it's just not something that people worry about. These are complicated challenges that we have, for sure, and there's different solutions depending on what the problem is. There's different things that need to be done to ensure that we can affordably achieve the energy transition, like you said, to that clean energy future. Even in that point in time, the solar facility was not free to build. Somebody built it.
Correct.
Some, you know, there's, there's a cost to them, and they, they had to attract capital
Right.
As well. So, how can we ensure that they're not earning too much or too little? It's, it's, the whole thing is, is highly complicated.
Well, that's, and that would be one, I think, a solution that you should do more of, is for those cheaper generators to, instead, because you don't have to invest in R&amp;D, marketing, those types of things, if you do their choices. But you could look at, you know, we have to buy, we have to provide a certain, we know we have this many customers, we know what demand generally is, we can forecast it out. So, it's cheaper for us to invest in, even though we're not generators of electricity, to invest in renewables, so that we're bidding at a low, we're actually getting the power for less money overall. That, that's forward-thinking in that regard, as opposed to, you know, some of what I heard tonight.
And I, and I, I agree with the sentiment that, again, we should be taking in all of the above solutions oriented approach, and we are. There's nuances in their details. For instance, we're not allowed to, by law, we can't enter into, we, we have to procure the power the way that we do.
Right.
We own the maximum amount of solar facility. We actually do own solar generation in Massachusetts, 70 megawatts. That's the maximum that we're, actually, excuse me, I think, I think we have other applications pending. So, we own a significant portion of solar facilities just for that reason. We believe in the ambitions of the state. We're trying to achieve everything on the, the least cost, most affordable basis as, as we possibly can. There's a lot of complexity to it, and, but I understand that I
Sure. And I, I would say that, that public policy is one that could be looked at, as opposed to the renewable future.
Understood. Right.
You know, so that there can be that level of investment, so that rather than just passing it on to, to customers, as seems to be the, the case, to many, and that's what many constituents feel, that there's an industry-based solution to the, because the industry, not you individually, not Eversource individually, but the industry has been benefiting from the status quo for a long time, and it's time to move forward, and that should be done collectively and by the industry that has these, these legal monopolies, and not on the backs of, of consumers entirely. And that, many consumers feel that it is entirely on their backs, particularly people that are having difficulty making ends meet because of unanticipated energy bills. You can only buy so many blankets. You know, you need to have, you, you need to keep your pipes from freezing. So, you have to have your, your heat on. So, I've, I've taken up more than enough time, so, but thank you.
Thank you.
So, if, if you now say that you own some of these solar generating facilities, does that mean that you now have a small amount of power generation?
We do.
Does that count as that?
We have 70 megawatts of solar facilities in Massachusetts that, that we own. Yep.
Okay. So, Kevin was referencing, and I agree, the, the monopoly. So, I think, I think that's a, an adequate analogy. So, you said supply comes in, you, you purchased electricity from the grid?
We, we procure, yep, we enter into contracts for the, exactly, for the generation of electricity.
Right.
And then our customers pay the cost of those contracts with no markup.
No markup.
We pass it through.
Markup is on the other side. So, on the other side, we know that you are proactively investing in your infrastructure, correct? And you, you own all that infrastructure. Do you own all that infrastructure that supply?
Are you talking about the, so the pipes, the wires that delivers, whether it's the gas or the electricity that's generated?
Yes.
That flows through our infrastructure. We own the infrastructure. We don't own or have anything to do with the generator that's on the other end.
Correct.
And we don't, we don't, you know, mine the natural gas out of the earth, or, or we don't own that. We just own the infrastructure that delivers the resources to your home.
Correct. So, how, how, do you quantify that in miles?
Yeah. So, for the, I'm going off of memory. I believe in Massachusetts, between our electric, gas, and water, we have about 28,000, if I'm remembering, 28,000 miles of infrastructure, roughly, I'm getting the numbers, no, that's right. It's roughly enough to go back and forth across the United States 10 times, which I do think helps to put into context. And I'm not sure if this is where you're heading with the question, but, you know, there is a lot of infrastructure that needs to be maintained
Sure.
And proactively replaced. I'll let you go.
What's, do you know, how old is your oldest mile? So, I could tell you stories about this community. This pipe's in the ground here probably over a century.
Right.
What is it in your, in your, what you own, that 28,000? Do you know that?
I don't know, but there are, just, I mean, this is
There's no hundred-year, are there?
I don't know. I don't know. But there are
You're talking about water main, correct?
Uh, any, anything that you own?
Yeah. I think one of the, the challenges that we have, I can't answer the specific question, but we have assets that have been in place for decades, and many of them are by design, whether it's a pole, or it's a, you know, mile of pipe in the ground that's delivering gas, or whatever it is.
Sure.
You know, there are, there are
So, that program, that program, that preventative maintenance or replacement or whatever it is.
Yep.
Is it a five-year plan, 10, 20? What, what do you have?
So, that is a great question. I should know. Do you know the GSEP program? I think there's 10 more years, 10 more years in the program, as we're targeting there. Again, it's leak-prone infrastructure. We all remember the tragedy that happened in the Columbia Gas Service Territory years ago. A young man lost his life. There was infrastructure that was, you know, gas infrastructure that, that caused that accident. The state has, as a result of that, with good reason, and certainly well-intentioned, is, has a program to facilitate the extraction of the leak-prone infrastructure, to get it out of the ground as, as, you know, as quickly as reasonably possible, while keeping an eye towards affordability. So, there are bill caps the department has. There's, there's, I want to get, I'll let you get to your question a second.
No, that's fine. I'll, I'm just going to finish with this one. So, after this conversation that we've just had in your presentation, is, is really no variable that has been moved that will prevent nine months from now what's happening a few months ago, correct?
Well, I think that's, it's an excellent point. I think there's, there's short-term, and there are medium-term, and there are long-term solutions. As an immediate step, the Department of Public Utilities reduced the, the energy efficiency budget. It was originally going from $4 billion to $5 billion. It went to four and a half. So, still an increase, but less of an increase. The department also, with, with Eversource, we reduced the rates temporarily, and then have the state issuing a $50 bill credit. I think there's a lot of difficult conversations that we need to have in both the short-term, in the medium-term, and the long-term, because at the end of the day, the very good question was asked, what's a reasonable expectation for our customers in terms of their, their gas and their electric bill? And there's no simple silver bullet solution to say, next winter, it's going to be, you know, 50% of what it was last winter, or, or
You can't do that. You can't say that.
Correct. I wish that I could.
You can't say that. My big, my biggest fear is government does what it typically does, is that, you know, three months from now, it's 95 degrees out, and everybody's out on Long Beach, not understanding that winter is six months away, and the same thing's going to happen, and we act surprised that this has repeated itself.
And I think
And I agree with Mr. Golden. This is on the state delegation.
But it's not, just to the, the prior comment. I mean, Eversource has a role here, too, and we're not trying to say it's, you know, I think that is a very important piece. If that's not, we're here because we, we are committed to ensuring that we have a clean energy transition and a for, so there's, there's things that, you know, my team, where our staff is, is, our job is to set rates. So, we worry about this every day. I cannot tell you that I can wave a magic wand and reduce rates cannot tell you that I can wave a magic wand and reduce rates overall, but we are actively, we're developing proposals that will help to avoid the significant peak if nothing else. That is so challenging when you have a really cold January or February and your bill spikes because of usage, but your summer bill is, you know, a third or a 10%, you know, so we're trying to figure out is there a way that we can, now this doesn't solve an overall cost, but it can make it more affordable to the extent that we're not having these wild swings in one or two months of the year. So we're looking at rate design solutions. Is there a way to have that be more equitably allocated throughout the year? We're looking at anything that we can control, working with our, our regulator and our state leaders to understand how we can both work together to get short, medium, and long-term solutions.
I appreciate your time tonight. I'm assuming the two of you have been the Holy Oak?
Is that the, the ISO?
Yes.
I actually haven't. I
Well, you need to put that on your bucket list, okay?
Yeah. I think that's great advice.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just have a few comments. I visited the Poltek plant last year sometime down here. And I asked the gentleman from the Nuclear Regulatory Commission, whenever it might have been called, let's, let me ask you a question. With all our plants closing down in the United States, where are we gonna get our power? New stretch codes, all electric vehicles? He said, you know, that's a very good question. So I'm, I'm not really gonna point the finger at you or the governor, but I also know, and I said this at town meeting two weeks ago, we need to open up the conversations as well as this state does and not point fingers at the government or the state delegation. It's all our responsibility. You stop the pipeline, when I say I don't mean you, we, we stop the pipeline, we close all the nuclear power plants and for good reason, like the older ones, but now they have the SMR 300s, the small reactors they're building, I think, two, it's in Missouri or wherever it is. But the conversation needs to be had. Because I'm gonna tell you, you're not gonna green your way out of this. And if you think you're gonna green your way out of this, just think how it's working right now, common sense. What do you think your bills are so high for? Well, yeah, you're all getting free this and free that with MassSave. Nothing's free. I sell apples. Nothing's free. So we're gonna have this conversation and you are all gonna have these fits every time you go to your mailbox until we address it as a community, as a state. And we, I have started conversations with the governor's office. They were here several weeks ago because it is a concern to all of us. But it, we needed, and I talked to Mr. Fernandez, Ms. Badger, the state delegation, but the governor's office was good enough to zoom in. And I think they had some people at the table, didn't they, Derek? Yeah. So the conversations have been had. What the town of Plymouth is gonna do? I, I can't tell you. I could tell you what I would propose and I will if I'm here. If I'm not, I'll be over there saying my piece, why my electric bill's so high. But they're, they're looking at a 5% increase, I believe that's the say. And then after that, there's gonna be another 5% increase. So it's time, folks, to have the conversation of where we're gonna get our power in the future as a state, not as just the town. And it's not these people's fault. I, you know, I appreciate you coming in and representing and doing it, but, you know, I'm not gonna sit here and say it's your fault, because it's not. It's just as much ours. And we did learn at ISO that 33% of our gas comes from Canada. Things ain't exactly rosy right now, the United States and Canada, none, nothing to do with me. I love our neighbors. And it's gonna take a long time to fix that. That's not really funny. I know no one's laughing at it, but, so I'm gonna end with that. I'm open to it. We are talking with the governor's office. And, you know, it's gonna be the will of the people. And I already heard people say that, you know, and I understand where they're coming from, don't make the same mistakes in the past. Well, no, we won't use it towards having a cheap property rate. We'll either pay for a new $200 million elementary school or we'll take the debt and pay down the OPEB for the community. There's a lot of things we can do. How about, you know, reduce rates for our citizens? That's what I wanna see over there, my personal vision. But I haven't done all my homework yet, so it's premature to talk. So, but on that note, I know Mr. Blesser, but thank you for coming in. And we're gonna take a few questions from the audience, but that's just my personal view. And it's, it's still premature, but I am looking at other options and we're bringing them back hopefully to the community.
I just have a couple, couple real quick things I wanted to say. We, you know, we're hearing, since I've been a selectman, this is my fourth year, and it's all I've heard about. And, and I agree with it. We need, we need clean water. We need a cleaner air. Everybody wants that. But we have to pay for that. And whether you wanna blame the, the state for, for putting these restrictions in and this green energy, everybody is far protecting the environment. But I think that we need to have a conversation between the utilities, the state, and the local, local communities to come up with a solution of, of getting there with clean energy, but make it as affordable as we can for our residents. Our residents are up in arms on this. I mean, I'm talking us, everybody in this room. We're all, we're all, you know, horrified by our bills. But let's face it, there's not a person in this room that doesn't want cleaner air, that, that doesn't want clean water. It's all, that's all we talk about in this community. So, but I don't like, I, I hate putting blame on people. It's, you know, it's, it's not productive. We need to come up with a solution and start pointing fingers, come up with a solution. And we gotta get proactive right now about this. And with that, I'll end with, most, only a small portion of our community has gas. We have propane, we have oil, but electric, everybody has electric. Is, can we get somebody from the electric side of the company to come in and do a presentation on our electric bills? So we can get some answers on, on that utility. I think that would be very helpful.
Yeah, I, I had to apologize in advance. That would probably be, be me, but I would be happy to do that.
I, I think, I think you'll see a full house for that too.
Absolutely.
And, and please go back to your people and, 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 you know, let them know what you heard here tonight. We're, we're very concerned here. We're very concerned in Plymouth. So, anyway, and I'm sure you're hearing this everywhere, but anyway, thank you.
I'm gonna let the audience ask a few questions. We can't let everybody speak, but we'll let a, a few of you speak and be respectful, because if not, we'll end it. Ma'am?
Hi.
No, you have to come up to the podium and
Come on, Roz, you knew that.
You know better.
Identify yourself for the record, please, and make sure the green light's on.
Roz Jones, Precinct 9. Thanks for coming. I guess my question is, you know, I work in a very regulated industry. It's essentially a utility. It's a health plan. We do a lot of budgeting and forecasting. We know what our rates are gonna be and we know the impact to our customers. The optics of this, that it was a big surprise, I'm, did, I guess my question would be, could you have forecasted that people's bills would go up like this? I mean, certainly it was colder at some points during the winter than normal, but it's New England, it's cold. Yet the jump, there was no outreach, there was no warning, people got their bills and reacted. I also looked at your 2024, because you're for-profit, annual report and what you're projecting on raising your earnings per share 5% a year. So I guess what I'm asking is, to me, it seems like a big miss that this was such a surprise that people opened their bills in shock and awe, when I would guess that EverSource could have predicted this was gonna happen and could have maybe gotten ahead of it. So can you speak to that?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Roz, for the question. Are these your glasses?
No, they're
Okay, I'm sorry.
Somebody's glasses here. It's okay.
I didn't know. I just didn't know if they were there. Okay. So it's, it's a very good point. And I think a few things that I would say, certainly for our rates, and this is where I, I say, I'm not trying to, you know, have this be a common retreat in trying to hide behind. There, there are a lot of complex factors. In terms, in each one, I have a different answer for you. If you think about the overall bill, there's the market price for supply. We actually can't anticipate that or predict that or control that. We go out under rigid segments of time. We procure the power. It's a, it's a process that's regulated to ensure that we're establishing market prices for the supply piece, which is about half, a little less than half of the bill. So that changes on a regular cadence, but I can't tell you what the market price for gas will be. We saw the market price for gasoline spike with the war in Ukraine, for example. And that's nothing that any of us could have anticipated. COVID had the same impact on electric rates. So I would say this, so that I'm not just giving individual answers to each. It's, it's a very fair question and one that we're working on in terms of how do we communicate with our customers? Because I also don't say this to say, you know, to be defensive, but we did try to, we did communicate with our customers. We sent emails, we notified them of rate changes that were happening in November. The issue that we have is, we are trying to find, you know, it's, it's not many people who, who worry about their utility bill on a monthly basis to the point that they're opening every email and reading it diligently. So we're trying to find ways to engage with our customers in new and different ways. Honestly, community forums like this, hand-to-hand combat, whatever it takes is what we're willing to do. Emails, social media, getting out with state leaders, with municipal leaders. How can we have our customers be more part of the conversation to understand their bill, to understand what changes are coming? We are trying and we wanna get better. So I, I totally agree. The sentiment is exactly what you said. We had efforts in place to proactively communicate. That didn't work. So how can we do better? And that's what we're trying to do. We're taking a holistic view from soup to nuts. How do we present our bill? How do we improve our website experience when a customer who is interested in learning more or accessing programs? We wanna make that easy for them to understand and to get at. So we're trying to do everything and not just looking at how do we design rates and all the things that I'll talk about until I, you know, put you all to sleep. But how can we try to find ways that we can do exactly what you're saying? We don't want anyone to be surprised. We want anyone who's struggling to pay their bill to be able to access programs that are available to them. So I will just say, I appreciate the feedback. It's very well, well taken. And we're, we're doing everything that we can so that we can get it right next time.
Ah, yes. My name is Donald Bowden. I am not from Plymouth. I'm from a surrounding city. A while back, and another employee from EverSource had mentioned that one of the reasons why that we're paying these exorbitant bills is because we have to basically pay for those that don't pay their bills. Is that true?
So there are, there are income assistance programs that are reflected in your rates. That, that is true. And again, that's true for, ultimately, the, the, the way that the utility costs are, rates are set are reflective of their costs. And that includes, you know, if a customer doesn't pay their bill. So the short answer is yes.
But that's, that's not fair to us who pay our bills every month. I mean, why should I have to pay for someone else who doesn't wanna pay their bill for whatever reason? That's not fair to me and to everyone else here who's doing the same thing. And I know that's one of the reasons why that we're paying these exorbitant bills. Is that, to me, is just unfair and ridiculous. I mean, I'm obviously not blaming you personally, but your company itself. But I'm sure you're not the only utility company that does this. I'm sure it's probably every single utility company, but it's just not fair. Because, I mean, like everyone else, I have enough other bills. So why should I have to pay more because someone else doesn't wanna pay their bill? It's just not fair. And I know nothing will be done about it, but I don't know what else to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from anyone? Please come to the microphone, introduce yourself.
Hi, good eve, good evening. My name's Stacy Kaiser, Plymouth resident. I'm a math person. So one of the things that's been really driving me crazy is the delivery charges on the gas bill. What are the percentages?
Can you make sure to face the microphone, please?
I'm, I'm sorry. One of the, what are the percentages for each of the categories that you displayed earlier? I know we said MassSave is maybe 65% of one category, but what's the breakdown of the others? Because it seems like it's a big variable. Sometimes my delivery is twice my usage, sometimes it's close to three times. So how's that calculated?
Sure.
Thank you.
I can take a stab.
Thanks.
That's an excellent question. And we, that's one that we get a lot too. And part of what's, we've seen that doesn't help is the terminology. Because when we, the, the labels that we use on the bill, supply and delivery, the supply, it, again, and it's the same on the electric side, it reflects the, the gas. Well, on the gas side, it reflects the gas. On the electric side, it reflects the, the generation, the electricity that is generated. And in both cases, whether it's gas or electric, we go out and we purchase the, the power or the gas, and we just simply charge those costs to our customers at whatever the cost is with no markup. So it, it is a very good question, because the average person, just like yourself, and I would be the same if I wasn't in this, you know, space as my career, it, it doesn't make any sense. I think, well, Amazon delivers my packages for free. This delivery, you know, nomenclature, when that's my rubric, it does, doesn't make any sense. But the reality is a fewfold. One is the supply piece, that those costs change multiple times per year based on whatever the market price for electricity or gas is. So if the market price for electricity or gas goes up, that's a bad thing, because then that portion of your bill will go up. Optically, though, then it looks like you're paying more, right? You don't have this disparity that you're, you're seeing. And so when it comes down, which is a good thing for everybody, when that piece comes down, that's a great thing. Your bill is lower than it would otherwise be. But now optically, you're saying, I'm paying more to deliver than I am for the gas that I'm using. And that doesn't make sense. So we're trying to work on just, just how do we describe our bill, understanding, like my wife said, what, what, why do you need to continue to be paid for the infrastructure? It's just sitting there. That's such a natural reaction, not knowing that we've got enough to go back and forth across the United States 10 times. We have to proactively, you know, there's a lot that goes into it. But at least if we can explain it so, so, so customers or people like yourself who are interested have an easier time. That's one thing that we're looking at, actively changing the way that our bill is presented so that it's more clear and so that it's transparent. If you wanna know how much EverSource is earning on this, let's put that out there in a way that customers can access it and why. How much could be saved if there was a different business model? I might have a different perspective than someone may reach on their own. But that's, that's what we're trying to do. Customers are eager for it. We're hearing it. I think that's a very good thing. If I'm looking for a silver lining that has come out of this past winter, is we are going to make, make changes. And it isn't just EverSource. This is from state leadership on down. And I, and I do wanna just say, I, I am not here, and I do wanna be clear. Nothing of what we have tried to say is intended to point the finger at anywhere else. I think there's a lot of people that have to be part of the solution. EverSource is one of them. We're committed. But we're not saying that to say it's anybody else's fault. There's a lot of complex issues. We have to really roll up our sleeves and figure out solutions and, and we're here for it.
We take one more question from the audience. Jade, nobody online, right? Yeah, one more.
Hi, my name's Reg Rose. I live in the ponds of Plymouth. And I wanted to kind of make an impact statement, if I'm allowed to do that. And then my question was, is why is the distribution charges on our electric bills so specific? And why on our natural, the natural gas bills, you don't get that breakdown that you do for electric? And then that's my question, but I just wanted to just read a quick impact statement, if that's, if the board will permit me to do that. Okay. My name again is Reg Rose. I'm a retired disabled veteran. I was in attendance at the meeting at the State House on April the 8th. It's been widely publicized that the approval of the rate hikes by the Department of Utilities and the passage of S2967 was like a perfect storm for us. It both hit in November and sent our utility bills skyrocketing. The impact of that is disproportionate because it really impacts the most vulnerable members of our community, the people that are struggling already. There are 256,137 or 18.5% of Massachusetts households that are owned by residents such as me that are 65 years or older. All right? They're living on a fixed income. More than twice of that, or 684,345 households More than twice of that, or 684,345 households, and, and this is for Eversource, so they can hear this, live alone on a fixed income. Nearly half of all of the Massachusetts residents, or 1,072,587 households, heat their homes with natural gas. We have seen our utility bills nearly double over the past month since the rate hikes and the mass save surcharges went into effect. And for example, my utility bill alone was $1,027.55 that represented 18% of my gross monthly income. It's like a mortgage payment. Here in Plymouth, the median household income is $72,005, which is 40% less than the median annual income of those who live here in Massachusetts. So those living on a fixed income and are lower wage earners have been forced to cut back on food, dip into their retirement savings, utilize their credit cards, or defer payments altogether, just so they can afford essentials. There are 266,864 tenants whose rent is 35% more or more of their gross income. So these bills have a major impact on people's lives. I've talked with senior citizens who told me they had their thermostats set at 55 degrees in one of the coldest winters we've seen in seven years. So they've had to re-enter the job market, some retirees, some other people had to take a second job just to be able to pay their utility bills. Here in Plymouth, we-
Excuse me, Mr. Rose, how much time do you need?
Just like two minutes.
Okay.
All right?
Yep.
Because I, because this is Plymouth specific too. We heavily rely on tourism for our income in this area. Restaurants and other businesses have reported that their utility rates in Plymouth make it extraordinarily difficult for them to be profitable. They've had to raise their prices for goods and services to be able to make payroll and keep their doors open. This makes the rate increases an even greater threat to communities like Plymouth who depend on that. So I have information about the DPU, the 25% rate hike that they approved in November. Eversource's $811 million profit for fiscal year 2024. We talked about the CEO salary and that doesn't really factor in, but making almost $19 million total compensation package is a pretty good salary. All right? Like I said, there's, there is general laws, chapter 25, general, or general laws in chapter 239 that say that they're required to factor in the economic impact on the ratepayers. But it doesn't seem like that happened. It seems like it's a pass-through for all of Eversource's operating expenses to include vegetation, you know, and every, your operating expenses are paid by the ratepayers. Seems like a, just a complete pass-through to the ratepayers who now can't afford other bills, can't afford their medicine, can't afford to put food on their table. So I'm not, I don't have the solution. I've been to the State House, I've talked to representatives, I've been with Mr. Diggs up at the Ways and Means Committee. It seems like they just don't care. That's what it seems like, they're not hearing us. You know, it's just like, you know, we have an agenda here, this is what we're doing and to hell with everybody else. So I just, I appreciate your time. I'd like to know why we don't have a better breakdown on our bills on the gas side like we do on the electric side. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Thank you, Reg, and thank you for your service sincerely. It's an excellent question and I agree, and we are working on the bill presentation to enhance that, because that, that is something that needs to be improved. The gas, to your point, if you look at the electric bill, you can at least, if you're looking, see the various charges. Now, to the average person, we're also trying to evaluate how can we explain those, because it's a lot of acronyms that don't make any sense to most people. So very fair criticism and we're working on the gas bill to get it more transparent, as well as on the electric side, to have a more transparent bill and then web experience.
Okay. On behalf of the town and the citizens, I want to thank you both for coming in. And going forward, we'll be working with the delegation and the governor's office to at least see if we can address some of the, some of the issues and, you know, I, I don't think there's going to be a quick fix to it. You know, I always am one with the bad news, but it's reality, really. And it, we let it all, all of us let it get this way. You know, I'm sure nobody foreseen it, but it, and maybe it's a wake-up call to fix it and get it going the right way. So we'll be having the electric come in after the electric side of Eversource. Yeah?
I'll be back. Thank you.
Oh, you, that's you too?
I'll be, I'll-
Oh, boy.
Yes, thank you so much.
Operations is a different person.
Okay.
I, I do want to say that on behalf of community relations and fill any follow-up items and really if, if, if there's a need to come back and do some periodic updates or otherwise, just let us know, our doors always open. So happy to come back.
Thank you. Moving right along to licenses.
Mr. Chair, if my colleagues have no questions or comments on any of the items listed under licenses on the agenda that's posted on the website, I would make a motion to approve the licenses and the listed items they're under as a group.
Second. Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Mahoney. Discussion. Mr. Golden.
Yes.
Mr. Blitzer.
Yes.
Mr. Canty.
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney.
Yes.
And myself, yes, unanimous. We have eight administrative notes. Board's wish.
Mr. Chair, unless my colleagues have any questions or wish to take any administrative note individually, I would make a motion to approve administrative notes one through eight as a group.
Do I have a second?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, could we take note one separate and get a little bit more of an explanation on that?
Okay.
So amend my motion to be administrative notes two through eight as a group. Second.
Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Golden. Discussion. Mr. Mahoney.
Yes.
Mr. Canty.
Yes.
Mr. Blitzer.
Yes.
Mr. Golden.
Yes.
And myself, yes, unanimous. Now administrative note one.
Yeah, I think Kendra's here.
Good evening, Kendra Martin, water, wastewater engineer, for the record. So I just want to, we do this every year, but I'd just like to remind everyone that these water use restrictions are a requirement of our Water Management Act permits through the DEP, so they have to be enacted May 1st through September 30th of every year in order to comply with the permits. What we're asking for is the watering restrictions for odd number of houses to be three days a week, Wednesdays, Fridays, Sundays, and then even numbers would be Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays. If the drought restrictions become more strict, so right now we're in a level one drought, it can go up to a level four, we would make these more restrictive, so it could ultimately end in a ban of all outdoor watering.
Any questions from board members? Mr. Canty, then Mr. Blitzer.
Do you recall when the last time there was an outright ban on all outdoor watering was?
So I've been here for four years and it hasn't happened since I've been here.
What is the highest level of drought that we've seen during your tenure?
The highest level since I've been here was a level three, so that was restricted to, I believe, one day a week of watering at the level three.
Okay. Thank you.
So how, how much of, are we in a drought, we're not in a drought?
So the entire Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the Drought Management Task Force has issued a drought. The, we are in the southeast region, we're at a level one drought, the Cape's at a level two. The Drought Management Task Force meets every month and they are the ones who issue the drought levels.
Because we've had a lot of rain. I mean, we had a lot of rain all winter, with the spring, we had rain last year. And the reason why I'm asking that is because we had a presentation from the water manager and, and we're talking about revenue, that, you know, we were down revenue from water because of, because of the bans, that we wouldn't be able to use the water. So there are people that do like to water their lawn and, and they're paying for it. They're paying a premium for it. So my question is, to, is it really necessary to have, have a ban, restrictions?
Yes, it's required as part of our permit.
Okay. So, because I was just wondering if we, if we needed the, because we make money off of water.
Yeah, this has nothing to do with revenue, it's just strictly a permit requirement.
Okay. All right, thank you, just had a, had a ask, thank you.
I don't know that we necessarily make money off the water so much as we fund the operation of the Water Enterprise account and retained earnings, but I understand Mr. Blitzer's inquiry. Thank you.
Mr. Mahoney? So how many levels, how many drought levels are there? Four?
So there's zero, level zero, one, two, three, and four. So level zero is normal conditions.
Okay. And when did you start working for the town?
In 2021.
Okay, all right. And you said the highest drought level we've hit was three?
That I can recall, yes.
All right, so I'm assuming, given the summer of 2016, it had to have been. I mean, some of our wells were, at least one of them was dangerously low. It had to have been a four, I'm assuming. 2016 summer was, I think, a historical drought, so, you know, this is five years before you came here, but I'm assuming that we hit some sort of record because it negatively impacted our ability to deliver water.
Again, can't speak to that, but-
Yep, I'm just, just wanted to get that.
Push of the board.
Make a motion to approve admin note one.
Second. Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Mahoney. Discussion. Mr. Golden.
Yes.
Mr. Blitzer.
Yes.
Mr. Canty.
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney.
Yes.
And myself, yes, unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, Mr. Santos, Community Service Garden. Mr. Gallerani, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, board. First off, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank the town, especially the board of selectmen. Charlie in particular has been a great advocate for this project and, and Mr. Vendizzi and his staff and Jade have been incredible help. My, my advisory board, Linda Heenan, Eddie Carl someplace, and Christine disappeared. Oh, there she is, Christine Sampson. And of course, Barbara Santos, Ed's wife, and his granddaughter Catherine are here as well. This project started, it did from a conversation three years ago. And it was, the conversation was, how do we honor, what's the best way to honor Ed Santos and his legacy and his lifetime of service to the town of Plymouth? We decided that the Edward W. Santos Community Service Award would be the first part. And you've, you've welcomed me during those awards and, and we've picked honorees twice, '23 and in '24. And we'll be back this fall to do the next one. When we decide to go forward, we, we looked for donors. The donations were received and I thank all those that did that. A major benefactor stepped up and helped us. And from that, we were able to plan for a permanent pocket park. We went around with a few different sites that were possible. And then one day, we were at the library for a meeting to talk to them about if they would entertain it. And it dawned on us that that was the ideal location because it is one of the greatest community centers in town. People come and go all day long and they are the people that we hope to attract to become community servants. I've prepared a PowerPoint for you, so we can go through it and you can interrupt me and ask questions as we go through. The garden itself is intended to honor, as I said, Ed's legacy. And we would like to inspire others through their service, one more, through their service, their knowledge, their resources, time, and expertise. It's a place that will, for people to reflect and to, and for thought. We are a 501(c)(3), we are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. The advisory board, as I said earlier, is made up of those people on the list and those that I introduced. We have a founding benefactor, Bruce Botlet, who was brute botlet nuclear in the industrial park. He, he moved his operation to California a few years ago, but he's very involved in things in this area and he's, he's been a great help to making this happen. He is a great admirer of Ed and has become a friend of mine. The founding donors, there were 13 of them, you can see them all up there. Everybody from Cabby, Cabby Brini, Cabby Shack, Brad Cushing, Pierre Cole, Vinnie Di Macedo representing Bridgewater State University, David Gallerani, Skip Landers, Jeff Santos, Jeff Tracy, John Vincent, Sam Viscarella, and Chris Oldlyson, I think that's how we pronounce his name. They were all, they stepped forward soon as I asked. There were, you know, and again, every one of those people are, were admirers of Ed and have been involved in some fashion for years. So they stepped up because they saw the, the value of what we were attempting to do. The park itself, we've gone around and around with the design and here we are. It is a 600 square foot area. When you face the library from the parking lot, it's the area closest to the bike rack and the, and the walkway. The site will be cleared and this park will be, this garden will be built in its place. The two trees are native, they're dogwoods, and the plan is to surround that with Mayflower bushes and the brick, the brick area that was, is the space that people will walk on and, and seat, be seated is, the bricks will all be, not all, but a great percentage of, will be celebrating someone. Either people bought them to put names of loved ones on, or the organizations that Ed was involved in will be highlighted and it will be surrounded by benches that have been sponsored by local organizations. The benches will have the, the, or local people, the benches will have the sponsor's name across the front and on the seat will have a quote regarding community service. The installation itself is those three panels that are, that you can see. The center one will be celebrating Ed. The, the two side panels will, will list the annual honorees. The plan is to have this in place for 50 years. If it goes beyond that, there'll be other people that will be pushing to, to keep it going and adding panels. But by design, we've got, this is a 50-year project and from there, we'll see what happens. I won't be here to see what happens, but somebody will be. There it is in a larger form, so you can see. Any questions about the design? Charlie?
Just for my own, Ed, did you, did, Mike, did you change the design? The design I saw, was it at the other side? Was that changed?
Well, it's, it's evolved as we've gone along.
Was it, but, were the doors out, was it to the left before? That's what I-
No, the main entrance, and this is to-
It was always right there?
What we, what you might be thinking is, we were going to remove the bike rack. We decided-
Okay, I thought it was on the other side, so Dave, Mr. Golden's right once again, so I thought I was losing.
Yes, to the, it's to the left of the bike rack and it go, extends over to the side of the entrance railing.
It was a little more, it was a little more complex with more granite. It was a little more complex with more granite, I think, what I saw, again.
Yeah, the granite will be there. It's just we didn't, Liz didn't put the granite in.
I might have better seen your moment, so...
Yeah, so, but the granite, the, the bollards are going to be granite. Those four things sticking up, we may put six.
So the, the concern I have, and I was only, I, I liked the site, I liked, but the only concern I had was with the library. Do you have an MOU? Is that in place?
It's, it's, it's with Town Council.
Okay. So it's not, so that's pending that. Okay.
Yeah. I mean, we, I think...
This approval, okay.
Mrs. Braddy and I are in agreement that it should be coming...
So, as I, as I said, when I, Mr. Santos was there and her granddaughter and, you know, I don't have to tell you how impressive Ed Santos was, uh, you know, we, the Terry Murray Award at the courthouse we have every year, and Ed was one of the recipients of that, well deserved. And his, and, you know, he was alive then to see that. And, uh, this, this is a, to me, it's a, uh, it's a public service exhibit at the library that people can come, they can sit out there and they can look at this and see what public service, somebody that gave his life to public service in Plymouth. And maybe they, maybe some of the kids from school that go through there, maybe they'll aspire to do, to be Ed Santos, the next Ed Santos, seeing what, seeing this beautiful, this is going to be a beautiful area to sit in, just a nice quiet day at the library. Uh, I like it better here because I thought it was farther down, out of the way. This is much more vis- visible.
Yeah, we were very cognizant of the fact that we didn't want it to look like it was the Ed Santos Library.
It, it's beautiful.
So we made sure that we, we hugged a little way away so that people wouldn't, wouldn't interpret it as being, you know, that's what the name of the library is.
If anybody doesn't know the history, read up on, on the, uh, on the, uh, the industrial park that they started and just, Ed Santos's history is unbelievable.
Oh, too.
And then just look at the donors, the pillars of our community that donated to this. That says it right there. So it's, this is a great thing. Uh, Mr. Santos, I'm sure it's going to be one, it's dedicated. It's going to be a proud day for you and your family, so, and I, hopefully I'm going to be there because I want to see this.
We're shooting, we're shooting for June, late, late June or early July for the dedication.
And I'm glad that Health and Human Services, uh, work together with the library folks and the board and so it's a good collaboration. You've got a great committee too, so...
A little more to go through. So, say preparation. That's, there's the, the rendering of the, uh, the site. Uh, it was done early, so it doesn't reflect exactly what we, what we're planning, um, but it's, it's near. The trees are the only things that are not, you don't see in there. The two dogwoods, but the rest of it is accurate. And I want to publicly thank Bill Farnaschary and Liz Tracy for doing the rendering for us because they donated their time and expertise to get those done. Site preparation. Yeah, we're going to remove the trees, the large trees that have been there for a very long time. Uh, we're going to remove all the surface roots, which is a major problem on the site because they're pushing up. They're, they're just disrupting the site itself and those will be taken out so that it doesn't disrupt what we're putting in. Uh, we're going to repair the irrigation system, which has an issue that the library made us aware of. Uh, we'll regrade and level the site and add loam and then lay down, uh, the gravel base for the pavers and then, and then the rest of it begins. The installation itself, next, next. Here we have. Well, somebody can read that. Uh, the installation itself is a tribute done in three sections, as I described earlier. Uh, the, the benches are granite with no backrest. The library asked us to not have backrests, so it's an easy one. The edging will be granite, as, as Charlie suggested. Uh, the plantings will be mayflower bushes and other native plants and the bollards will be granite. The installation itself, you have a large rendering of it, I think, on your desk, uh, is the three sections and Verona Signs will be, uh, doing that installation. They've been, they've been working with us closely as we've evolved that because it's changed a little bit. For those that remember the early rendition, it was very wordy and I was concerned that you, you would not be able to read it unless you were right on top of it. So we adjusted it so it had some white space, we'll call it, so you could actually see it, see that it was something from the industri, from the parking lot and move closer to read it and, uh, see the benches and, and sit and relax. And the honorees that will be listed each year. The narrative, it's, uh, the installation narratives, excuse me, it's past my bedtime. Um, the main narrative, you can see, I don't need to, I don't think I need to read it to everybody, but you can read, we'll leave it up there for a couple sec, minutes to let everybody take a view of it. And if you, for those that don't know who Ed Santos was and who, what his, what his legacy is, you can go to the website, which is theedaward.org. And I think you'll, you'll be happy that you had someone like Ed Santos in, living in Plymouth and doing all that he did. Remarkable. There's nobody in my lifetime that I knew that came even close and I expect it'll be a long time before there's anybody that reaches his level. But that doesn't mean everybody can't strive to stand on his shoulders and be inspired by, by Ed as I was. Next. The centerpiece of the installation is a quote and it happens to be something I did. Uh, and that will be written in that area that we, so we opened up the, the layout of the installation. And again, we'll leave it there for a minute and you can read it. Okay, next one. The benches, as I said, will have the donor's name across the front and a quote on the, on the seat of the bench. Um, there's four people, or four people or organizations that have donated the money for the benches. Barbara Santos and I have come to a conclusion of what her quote will be and it's, I don't know it off the top of my head, but it's a quote of Pope Francis, um, and it talks about service. Uh, Bruce and Patricia Bartlett, Bruce's, uh, great benefactor, uh, Bruce and I worked on wordsmithing his own quote. Rotary Club, "Service Above Self" is their, their motto or statement. And then the 400th Legacy, uh, we're going to use the William Bradford quote. It talks about service. Now, the, the bricks, this is similar because I've changed the design of the bricks. Um, they'll be, they're sponsored by individuals. You can see some of the names behind and some of the others that, that we've decided will just honor, um, by putting their, their names, whether they're an organization or individuals, uh, on the bricks. Uh, the bollards will extend out of the ground three to four feet. It will be granite, as I've said, as will the, um, edging material. As I said earlier, mayflower bushes and other native plants and Liz Tracy's going to advise us on that because she's, she is more knowledgeable about that than probably any of us about what's actually native and belongs there. And, um, Philippini and Family Landscaping is going to be working with us on the landscape. The budget. Uh, we project it's a $50,000 project. Um, site work and labor probably is $14,000. Installation, the, those three panels is just under $19,000. The benches will probably run about $8,000. Um, the ballards, the bollards, pavers, and edging will be about $8,000. And we've budgeted $3,000 for the plantings. Now, those are numbers that are fluid and if they need to be adjusted, they will be. Um, we've raised enough money that if we exceed any of, any of the costs, we'll be able to absorb it. Um, but those are the projections and we, we feel pretty confident on those numbers. Timeline, once we receive the approval from the board, we're ready to go forward. Uh, once I have the memorandum of agreement signed and in place and confirmation and writing from the, from the town, um, we'll move forward and start right away. Um, my plan, our plan is to not disrupt the business of the library, so we'll either be in early in the morning or times that the library's not open unless what we're doing isn't, it doesn't disrupt the day-to-day. Uh, obviously the, the site clearing and the site preparation is the thing that will happen early in the morning one day. The library people will come in and realize we've been there because it'll be a significant difference. Uh, we hope to get the project completed by late May, early June and then be able to do the dedication in June. One more.
Mr. Canty?
So circling back on something that Mr. Blitzer had asked about, so you're, you don't have an official agreement with the library trustees yet, but you're, you're close to that?
It's with the town. The town owns this building.
Okay.
So the agreement is the, the library represented by Mrs. Braddy and Mr. Brandezi and myself are signing the agreement.
Okay, but you don't have that in hand yet?
We have it. Town council's reviewing it, making, making whatever changes are necessary.
Okay. So if we, if we were to make a motion, we'd want to have it be subject to the completion of the MOU?
That is correct. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I think it's a very worthwhile project and if it wasn't for Ed and yourself, Quintos wouldn't be here in Plymouth. I remember that day I met you in the industrial park and, uh, there was nobody on the corner as I, as I remember it. We were the first ones on Scobie Circle. And we ran into a few snags and I'd call Eddie and Barbara would answer and Ed would get on the phone and I said, "Ed, we got a little problem here." And he'd say to me, "Richard, don't worry about it. We'll work it out in the morning." And he'd meet me over there and that's exactly what he did. Because if it wasn't for him, not that it's the biggest thing in Plymouth, but we wouldn't be here and I'm forever grateful for him for that.
And quite honestly, every, every building, every company that moved into the industrial park, it was always Ed and I and we, you know, we've resolved any issues and that's why the park is what it was.
I still have your card. Yeah?
Yeah.
And, uh, it's amazing how they worked with Rockland Trust, Eddie did with Barbara Baubalas and everybody. It was kind of like, you know, start here and he helped you right through the whole process.
If I, if I may, I'll tell you the genesis of the industrial park. The town decided to pursue industrial development back in the early 60s because of the, you can read the book, you know, I'll give you a copy.
Oh, no, he brought one. He used to come visit. Yeah, he brought a book and I believe it was the Callister Brothers, right? That actually did the deal with Eddie.
It was the Callister Brothers.
Yeah.
Eddie, it was before, I was in the second grade when they were doing it, so it wasn't me. Um, but Eddie went to the Callister Brothers to talk about buying their land and the Callister Brothers said to them, "We'll do even better. We'll make the land available. You put in the roads and the s, infrastructure and as you sell it off, pay us, pay it down." So without that, I'm not sure they, they could have done it, but it's a, it's a great tribute to all the people that were involved. So, yes. One more, one more thing before you, before I leave.
Sure.
The nomination period for the award is now open and it runs till the end of August. So I'd like to give each one of you the nomination form and anybody else that would like one. Uh, I'd ask that you go to the website and see what the criteria are for, to be nominated. But it's pretty open. It's just, it needs to be somebody that's not being paid for their service. It's community service, so, uh, so I ask if you want one of these, they're right here. Christine will hand you one. I'm going to pass the vote.
Push of the board?
Make a motion to approve the Edward W. Santos Community Service Garden as presented, subject to, uh, the completion and signatures on the MOU by all parties.
I'd like to second that motion by Mr. Canty.
Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Blitzer. Discussion. Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. International City of Peace Proclamation. Mr. Legu. I said it right? Alice Legu.
Alice Legu. Good evening, gentlemen. I'm here in a different capacity than I have seen each of you in the past with the League of Women Voters debates. So, um, I am grateful for your being willing to hear this. I'm grateful for the members of the audience, uh, to town officials and to all of the supporters. For me to be able to introduce to you the International Cities of Peace with our hope that you will endorse our proposal to proclaim Plymouth as an international city of peace. I stand before you as the immediate past president of the Noontime Rotary Club. This journey for me began when I attended PET's president-elect training for incoming presidents of Rotary. It was there that I discovered this worldwide organization that promotes local communities in becoming cities, cities of peace. You've all been presented, I'm, I'm speaking with the, the select, select board, um, with a packet that, um, describes the International City of Peace, not only with their organizing premises, but with many ways a community can reflect the goal of peace for all. As I listened to their presentation and spoke with Rotary Club leaders from surrounding communities, I reflected, as the United States' first town, who better than Plymouth to be a city devoted to peacemaking? The goal of the international organization is to have 1,000 international peace communities by the end of this year. There are cities on every continent except Antarctica. Penguins are not forming cities these days. And, um, the current number is at least 600 worldwide cities of peace. Our neighbors to the south, Bourne, Fall River, New Bedford, and our neighbors to the west, the Bridgewater's and Foxborough, are all cities of peace. When we first contacted Town Hall, the administrators recommended that we engage with the No Place for Hate Committee. Mr. Delafield and myself attended two meetings with them and received not only their endorsement, but also their assistance in drafting our proclamation. We have also received the endorsement of our own Rotary Club as well as the Plymouth Area League of Women Voters. As part of the packet we prepared for you, which hopefully you had time to review, it offered many ideas about what any community can do to fulfill its proclamation. What is our goal? As we envision this, it's for our townspeople to understand and embrace a community dedicated to peace, first of all. We intend to prepare a, a press release to let interested citizens know about our group's philosophy and an invitation for input. We'd like to prepare a pamphlet with a proclamation which various businesses could distribute to all visitors and newcomers to Plymouth. We'd also like to form a group from interested citizens, um, various clubs and cultural institutions in the town to plan a celebration to acknowledge the International Day of Peace in September. We'd like to propose, at a time in the future, the installation of peace poles to let residents and visitors see that all are welcome here. We would seek to use grants and fundraising initiatives to support our activities. This is just a few of our potential goals and aspirations. Tonight, we need your approval of our concept and our goals by naming Plymouth an international city of peace and approving our proclamation as written in order to move forward, not only for us, but for the whole community. And I would like to close with, if there is to be peace in the world, there must be peace in the nations. If there is to be peace in the nations... If there is to be peace in the nations, there must be peace in the cities. If there is to be peace in the cities, there must be peace between neighbors. If there is to be peace between neighbors, there must be peace in the home. If there is to be peace in the home, there must be peace in the heart. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your presentation here tonight.
You're welcome.
In the second clause of the proclamation, it talks about everyone being welcome, which I think people certainly are in Plymouth. But it talks about, at the end, it just leaves like an open hanger that says any other personal attribute. Does that include things like immigration status, criminal history, things like that?
I, I guess that's not something that, so we, we worked with No Place for Hate, and we worked with the town officials, and what we got, what was agreed upon by those three is what came back to us. We are, we have always been a community of immigrants from the pilgrims on. And somehow, we have managed to assimilate them within our community and to give recognition to them in their individual celebrations, their individual holidays. So I foresee Plymouth as remaining a city of immigrants who are, who through our efforts as organizations within the town are able to assimilate and adopt a peaceful existence here in our community, as well as any of the many visitors that we come. I mean, not only do we service our own community, we service the world's community when they come to visit. And I think that's as equally important, because Plymouth is America's hometown and the original.
I would like to see this read. The residents of Plymouth are committed to establishing peace in the, in the region in order to improve the quality of life for all residents of our town. Period. Well, I guess, semicolon. Are, are we open to making amendments to this?
Do you have a, you don't want the rest of that, you don't want "and region" and to make Plymouth a town where all people belong regardless of race, ethnicity, ethnicity, national origin, religion, gender identity, or any other personal attribute to be part of the sentence?
Well, I, I would like to see, no, I would like to see it end at, all residents of our town and region.
Could you articulate your reasoning for not wanting race, ethnicity, national origin, religion, gender identity, or any other personal attribute?
Well, I think I made clear that my, my concern here is that there's an open hanger at the end that talks about any other attribute. And I think immigration status and criminal history are things that people are concerned about in this community.
National origin is specifically enumerated? That would include immigration status?
Yes, but immigration status is certainly separate from nation of origin.
Well, I'm not interested in your particular editorial comments, but I will allow my other colleagues to chime in.
We need to eliminate hatred in this town, in, in every town, every community. And all you have to do is go on social media, and the hatred on there for the cowards that go on Facebook and other social medias, and make comments about people that they don't even know anything about them. And we are America's hometown. We have a, a huge tourist town. We have people from all over the world that come to our, to visit us. And we need to welcome them, and they need to come over here and be free to come over here and, and enjoy, and, and enjoy this town. And quite frankly, I don't judge, I don't want to judge people. That's not, it's not my job. The guy upstairs is the ultimate judge, so, you know, I, I don't want to be judgmental. If we're going to be a town of peace, we need to welcome, and we need to love everybody. So that's, I'll leave it at that. I, I think we should leave it just as it's written. I think it's much simpler, and, and I can't say it enough, that we, we, we need to eliminate hate. Hate is, we're never going to have peace as long as we have hate. So, anyway, that's my take. Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Canty?
I would point out that it wasn't long ago that we were hearing that fear in this community was causing children to stay home from school and other, and people to stay home from work, and that a lot of that had to do with people's fear about their immigration status. Personally, I do not want to live in a town where children are afraid to go to school for any reason, or people are afraid to go to work. So I, I would prefer that we keep the language as written.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the International City of Peace Proclamation with the language as included in the packet.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Blitzer. Discussion. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to make sure that folks understand that I have no problem with being a, a town of peace. In fact, I think that peace is an admirable aspiration. I think that we are a town, a commonwealth, and a country of laws, so I don't know that I necessarily see the purpose of this. Simply for the editorial suggestions that I made, I don't think I'll support this. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Golden?
No.
Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Four, excuse me, four in favor and one in opposition.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
General Obligation Bond Anticipation Notes. Patricia Mechen?
Is that right? Mechem.
Welcome. Good evening, board. I'm Patricia Mechen, treasurer, collector, and with me tonight I have Lynn Barrett, Finance Director. Tonight, we bring to you, we're presenting the General Obligation Bond Anticipation Note. This was previously authorized by the Board of Selectmen, authorizing me to borrow for these projects, but we come to you tonight for approval and the official vote as written in the note that was provided to you. So the recent anticipation note was for $16,175,070, and we received five bids. The coupon rate was at 4% with a net interest cost of 2.92%, 2%. The premium that we received was $173,234.25. This is a one-year note that will be due and payable on April 24th of 2026. And we received an S&amp;P rating of a double A+, which is for long-term borrowing, and an SP 1+ for short-term borrowing, which is the highest rating that you can receive on short-term borrowing. In this slide here, this is a total amount of the ban. It's made up of all the projects that are listed here, and we did further break it down by funds. We have the CPA funds, general fund, and water funds. This here is a short-term note, and either we do not plan on borrowing for the long term, or these projects listed here are not ready to be borrowed long-term. This here is the historical interest rates, and as I stated previously, the coupon rate is 4% with a net interest cost of 2.929%. The coupon rate is the rate at which the investor earns on municipal bonds. When we go to market to sell and receive bids, an underwriter gives us a premium, and that's what determines the net interest cost. It is reduced by the premium. And that premium will go towards debt service costs and/or interest. This next slide is the standard impores rating. Prior to going out to borrow, we schedule a rating call with the rating agency. We have the Director of Finance, the Director of Assessing, Planning, and IT, as well as myself in attendance on this phone call, and we go over the finances and the economic growth, as well as discussing any liabilities to the town. Prior to the call, the rating agency will send us a list of questions or requests for information, and based on that information that they gather or we provide to them, that they determine the town's ability to repay the General Obligation Bond. And the higher the rating that we receive, the more favorable interest rate that we get when we go out to borrow. Then they also provide us an outlook, highlights and outlooks, and so based on the report, we have a steadily growing property tax base. We have a strong revenue performance. We have low market risk due to strong market access. We do have a slightly elevated debt and retirement liabilities, but they do say that those are manageable. We do have strong management and good financial management policies in place with a robust 10-year capital planning, regular budget monitoring and reporting, formal investment and debt management, and with the expectation that finances and budgetary flexibility will likely remain strong. Tonight, we've provided to you the documentation for the closings for the board to approve and the official vote, in that you're authorizing, myself as the treasurer, on your behalf, you're reviewing the amounts and the interest rates, the dates of maturity. Just to make you aware, as far as the school roof projects, that is just the town share. Bond council does not allow us to go out and borrow for the share that they will be reimbursing us for. And so what you see there is just the town share cost of that project. There's the notice of the preliminary and final official statement that's been ratified, confirmed, and approved and adopted, and that we are in compliance with SEC and IRS. And all these documents that have been included for you are to be signed by the select board, the treasurer, the town clerk. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Mr. Canty?
So are rating the double A+? What is the highest rating the town has ever had in that category? Do you know?
As far as I'm aware, it is the double A+ that we've received.
Okay. And how long have we had double A+ for?
Twenty years. It's for as long as I can remember.
I think we got upgraded during my tenure here, so probably within the last 10 years or so, I believe we got upgraded.
Okay. I remember a long time ago on FinCom being told we had, we had increased our...
I've been here 17 years, so I think it was probably about 10 years ago or something like that.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mahoney?
So Patricia, just, is this an every-two-year thing, process?
So we generally try to do long-term borrowing every two years, but we typically will do short-term borrowing in the interim. Last year, we did do both a long-term and a short-term.
And?
Yeah, so we'll probably, we'll continually monitor it, especially the CPA items, because we've sort of taken a position that we don't want a long-term on the CPA borrowing, so we'll usually continue to roll those over temporarily and pay down. But on the other items, the general fund items, the water items, once those projects are completed and we know final cost, then we do long-term borrowing. So it usually happens about every two years.
I'm not going to read everything here. I just know that you have given us in the past, Lynn, the history of the bond rating for the community, and there were nine levels, correct? So the next level would be a triple A-, or it's just triple A?
No, it's triple A-, and then triple A, and then triple A+.
So I think in the early to mid 90s, the community was a single A+.
Yeah.
And in the last 25 years, there have been three jumps. And I, I want to say that the last jump to a double A+ was around '24, you're right, about a decade ago. But I'm not going to read it all, and obviously, they go into all the positives that are consistent with how, I think, responsible Americans handle their own household finances, and it's just, you're doing the same thing year over year. And the example I always use is, you know, we take out a 30-year mortgage, and whether or not the economy is booming, or it's in a recession, if you want to keep a house, every 30 days we're making a payment, and at the end of 360 payments, we, we retain an asset that we're free and clear of. And that's how government should handle money, but they don't. So, and you're still going to stand by that, you're going to still stand by the rationale you've given me in the past, Lynn, that we really can't get to the triple A because of primarily demographics? I don't want to put you on the spot.
Yeah, I mean, there's a, there's a lot of variables that they look at. So, and because of our demographics, and because of our, you know, different ratings or profiles that we have with the state, you know, with income and those kinds of things. We would never be the level of like the, say, the Duxberys or the Lexington's or Wellesley and Weston and that kind of thing. But I think that they, they look at all of our other, you know, items, and we're rated, I believe, very strongly in those items.
Yeah, everything is positive in here. They just mentioned the, they mentioned the OPEB, which is, what, $550 million?
Yeah, and that's really the negative that they, the negative that they point out is our elevated liabilities, that debt, which includes pension, OPEB, and, but they say that, you know, that those are manageable, and that we are managing them, you know?
Right.
To the level that we can by doing the various things that we've done in the past, funding the OPEB trust, funding the pension liability, you know, paying off the pension liability five years before we're supposed to, and trying, sticking to that. You know, making changes to insurances through PEC agreement, you know, they, they look at all those things when we, when we meet with them.
Right. And last question, our audits are still, for the last decade, showing really nothing out of order.
Right.
Nothing Brocktonian, correct?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Correct.
Any other comments or questions? We should, the board?
I would make a motion to approve, and then, do we need a motion to sign, or just a motion to approve the bond application note?
It would be the...
There's a vote that you have?
Yeah, there's a vote of the select board in the packet. If you could just make a motion to approve as written in the packet.
I saw that. It does, it does predetermine that we're going to vote unanimously, but...
Are you reading that?
I can read it.
I don't, I don't think you have to. I mean, it's lengthy.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
It's lengthy, so if you just...
Yes.
It's lengthy, so if you just...
Yes, yes. I would make a motion to approve the vote of the Select Board as listed in the materials.
Have a second? Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Mahoney, discussion. Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Myself, yes, unanimous. See?
Lucky us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Removal from civil service, chief?
Thanks for having me back. So we're here tonight to talk about...
Chief of Sides?
Yes. Chief of Sides? Chief. So we had to talk about, about question one coming up on May 17th. The question's going to ask, the town of Plymouth revoke its acceptance of Chapter 31 of General Laws, the civil service law for all positions of police department. We get a lot of questions of why we're going, why we propose this question abroad before the ward. The main issue is to address, address the ongoing recruitment and retention problems we've been having, not only us, but many police departments across the country have been having. Leaving civil service is just part, one part of a plan that we've put together to address our shortages and plan for the future growth of the town and the department. Every mass agency, police agencies having the same difficulty, and many have deemed the current civil service process as an impediment. And as of late, there's been 35 agencies who have left civil service, including City Town of Brookline, Lexington, Eden, Wellesley, Framingham, Natick, Franklin, and our neighbor Carver. When I went on the website today, I counted only 106 municipal police departments remaining in civil service. For the town of Plymouth, well, the history, civil service was created in 1884, and it was intended to combat the patronage nepotism in public hiring. The town of Plymouth voted to accept the provisions of the law through a townwide ballot on March 3, 1917. And with the help of Connor Anderson, we were able to get the final tally of that vote. It was 658 Plymouth residents, yes, and 605, no, and 300 decided not to vote. Just a little background on where we stand with our recruitment and retention. Fiscal year '22, we ended with a shortage of 11 police officers. FY '23, we had six short. '24, we had eight. And currently, even though I have 10 officers that are enrolled in the police academies, with eight scheduled graduating June, two more in September, we are still currently, right now, six officers short. I have five projected retirements by the end of this calendar year. And I had an officer notify me today that he's been offered a conditional offer of employment to a neighboring town. The last civil service list that we utilized to hire the 10 candidate or student officers only had 43 names on it. Of the 43 names, persons who took the test, only 21 signed the list indicating an interest in becoming a Plymouth police officer. Out of those 21, only 12 returned the application packets. And after background checks and interviews, those 10 received conditional officer employment. At that time, our list was exhausted last September. And the next civil service list will not be ready for use until sometime in July. So how the current civil service system works for hiring, it's, they have one exam per year. This year was in March. That's typically when they run in March. In order to take the exam, all you need is a high school diploma or GED and a Massachusetts driver's license. It's a statewide multiple-choice exam, same exam as used to fill municipal, state, and MBTA transit police. And the results can take five months to be returned and have the list to be certified. Once, once the list is certified, we have to send in a requisition before we receive the list, and it's based upon the number of vacancies. The list we get is the list. We cannot alter it. We then send a notice to everybody named on the list. Then we set a timeline for those candidates to come in and sign the list, typically a week. If the candidate does sign the list, we offer them the application packet, and we usually give them another week to turn it in. If they decide to turn the packet in, then we start the background process, which is quite lengthy. If everything is in check, we offer them a recorded interview. If the candidate is not deemed suitable early on, we ask for a voluntary removal from the process. However, we've had in the past that, where we've asked, they do not voluntarily withdraw, and we have to start a lengthy and costly bypass appeal process with the state. Civil service can overrule bypasses on procedural grounds that would require agencies to accept the candidates that were deemed not suitable. If the candidate is suitable, we give them the conditional offer of employment. Then they, after that, they have to complete a medical, psychological, and physical ability exams. And if they complete all that successfully, then we can enroll them in the academy. Every one of these steps needs to be completed before we can enroll students. Academy seats aren't always available by the time the process is completed, and it's not uncommon to be delay of months or up to a year before we can get a seat for these, for the conditional offices. As far as transfers of veteran officers, I can only accept or I can only receive veteran officers from other civil service agencies. And that's only if the requesting officer's chief agrees to let them go. I've had a number of discussions with the, both unions, which representatives here, Lieutenant Mark Higgins represents the Superior's Union, Officer Kyle Kreitzer represents Patrolman's Union. And they brought their concerns to me as well about recruitment and retention in the department. They agree that civil service is an impediment of us getting high-quality candidates. And in the last CBA, which was, when in effect last July, they agreed to sit down with the town and discuss options on how to leave, leave the, leave civil service. Collectively, we sat down, we developed a policy, draft policy for the recruitment and hiring viable candidates, and it also, which also addresses promotions in the disciplinary Typically, what it, what it does, we pretty much took civil service law and put into an agreement. And there have been ongoing discussions with the town as well, how, how we can also, above and beyond this, improve the recruitment and retention of police officers. Some of the benefits of leaving civil service allows us for greater flexibility, flexibility in hiring and promotional processes. We will no longer be required to hire from an existing layoff list, if there are any. We can determine when our examination dates in promotional, hiring and promotional examination dates will be, and how long the expiration dates. We can set our own eligibility guidelines. Right now, as I said, all you need is a GED. You know, we can set, you need to at least have an associate's degree. We can determine hiring preferences that we want for our department, including veterans' preference or residency, or language preferences. We'll have a large, much larger and diverse candidate pool to select from. We can recruit educated candidates from colleges in the area to take the exam. We'll have increased flexibility with higher lateral transfers. As I said earlier, we can only accept civil service laterals. We can now, we would be able to accept them from non-civil service communities and colleges and universities that also have highly trained police officers. And we'll have the ability to incorporate the community and department-specific criteria to the promotional exams, that we can set the exams specific to Plymouth. There have been questions raised about the disciplinary process. There are a couple of options if an officer really gets themselves in a jam. One, one option is the officer, the officer or the employee can opt for a civil service hearing, or they can opt for an arbitrator's hearing, one or two. Getting out of civil service, they'll only have that one option. It's important to note that current civil service employees will retain their civil service status, so they will still keep that option. And it's been shown that most employees that have severe discipline typically go to the arbitrator. They seem that the decisions appear to be more favorable. And we, the police department, we already have our own robust disciplinary procedures and policies that clearly states that a permanent employee, whether or not subject to civil service, may only be disciplined for just cause. There's some concerns being raised as well about nepotism and discrimination. Civil service was established for those two reasons. However, since civil service has been, many state laws and commissions establish, including MCAD and the State Ethics Commissions, to address those, to address those issues. So in order to exit civil service, we have to exit the same way we went in. As I stated earlier, we came in March 3, 1917, through a townwide ballot. That's how the town would have to come out. And it's just a quote from that Chapter 4, Section 4B, that addresses current civil service employees. And, you know, with the steep decline in recent years of persons joining the police profession, it's, I think it's imperative the town act now in its own best interest to hire the best that we can. Any questions, if you have any? Both officers will ask, answer any questions they have.
Questions for the chief or the gentleman?
Could we just, could each of the union representatives just say a few? Because obviously, we've heard, we, the board, have heard from the chief on this. And I know there's been conversations amongst you, us and you folks, but just publicly, the stance of the Superior's Union and the Patrol Union would be helpful, I think, particularly for members of the public who are understandably just hearing about some of these issues for the first time this past week.
All right. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Canty. My name is Mark Higgins. I am the president of the Superior Officers Association. I apologize my voice. I was coaching third base yesterday, and the kids weren't listening. So I'm doing my best. So we put it to our body after numerous months of discussion, and it went, the vote went almost unanimous. We had a couple people that abstained, and one did not vote in support. The issue that I see, based on the virtue of my position, is I'm directly involved in the recruitment and training portion of our new officers that join the police department. And the one thing that I've noticed is that the amount of officers that we are getting on the police department is very little. And we're not getting the, we're getting great candidates that are coming to the police department, but the quantity is not there. And seeing the process that comes in when we're losing officers towards retirement, transferring to other agencies, moving on, whether it's a medical injury, getting them back is taking a long time. And we only have right now, like Chief was just saying, we have eight officers in the Falmouth Academy, we have two officers in the Plymouth Academy that just started up. That's 10 officers. Seeing how we're going to be having retirees or retirements come in July, though it's more or less a moot point, so we're still behind the buck on it. And the next round that we have coming in, the last civil service test that was administered back in March, there's only approximately 64 to 65 residents employed that actually took the test for our town. That, it's a major problem, because after we vet them out, and whether they're qualified candidates or not qualified candidates, we're cutting that list way down, and we're still behind the eight ball. Come with retirements, come with, you know, attrition of people leaving or promotions. So speaking from my perspective as a superior officer, seeing how it impacts the training division in our police department and getting qualified candidates in, I was in support of this, and I was an integral part in the draft language for moving this forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm Kyle Kreitzer, president of the Patrol Union. So Plymouth is a unique town in the population growth that we've had recently. So while every department is struggling to recruit and retain right now, it's no secret. Plymouth is unique because we, our population is increasing so rapidly, so our call volume is now getting distributed to a lower amount of officers. So our officers, I mean, if you look at the local news, the stuff we're going to now is crazy, and it's, it's officer, it's the same officers going to the same calls over and over again. And that takes a toll on them, and that shortens careers. And that's not just counting the geographical issues of Plymouth. So the reason why this is important to us is because we have to get our numbers up, and the current system doesn't seem to be working. So we have to do something different, and this is the idea that we've all come together and agreed upon, just to kind of get us out of this predicament of what we're in right now. So that's all I got to say.
So this is a question, could be for any one of you, Mark, you're the trainer, you might be able to answer it, or the chief. Attracting lateral transfers, let's talk about money. How much that's going to save the town? Because the folks out there, you know, they care about what it's going, how much it's going, I want to show how much this is going to save by getting out of civil service.
Right. So I don't have the exact numbers for you. However, a new officer comes in, it's 15 to 16 weeks, maybe 17 weeks at the police academy that we're paying the student officer. Then we have another 14 weeks of in-house training. So that's 31 weeks that we're paying a salary of someone that we really can't, can't put right to use. A lateral transfer, fully trained, other than the new uniforms, typically two weeks in-house training, familiarity with the community. I think at our last meeting, Mr. Canty asked a question. For example, the young officer notified me today, he's leaving. He'll be, he'll be gone by the end of April. The current process right now to replace him is 15 to 18 months. So that's what we're looking at. As the officers leave and retire, it just, we're just falling backwards in replacement.
So, Mark, the chief, Kyle, would you say that this isn't, this isn't a, this is not a want, this is really a need? We need to do this because we're in, we're in a, in a situation where we just can't get the officers. And I know I've been involved in the last two contracts, and all we talked about retention was a big part of what we talked about for the police. And so this is going to help us hopefully get more candidates. I'm not saying better qualified, I won't say that because I can't judge that. But it certainly will help us with lateral transfers that are already, already trained, and that will save us money.
Yes, and like I said, to kind of go off what the chief said, right now, as a civil service town, the civil service police department, we can only accept civil service laterals. So if we're removed, we can accept laterals from any police department in the area. So I think that's the big point in this, and it's not benefiting just, you know, the rank and file. It's getting good people, good quality, you know, candidates to come to Plymouth Police and work with us, and gives us a better opportunity to get that pool in and replace these officers quick. And like the chief just said, we also, just to kind of go off that, they're also riding along for three to four months with another officer. So even though we have that officer on salary, and he's riding, he's not by himself patrolling a sector covering an area. That sector is now having two officers patrolling that one area while that person's learning. So for the next three months, that's how, and then they get their wings, and then they're on their own patrol. So bringing them in, you have that about not even a month, and they're on their own patrolling the town of Plymouth.
And let's talk about recruitment. You can speak to this, you're on the job.
Well, I want to...
No, no, but you, you, departments actively recruit. You must get, you get, I've seen flyers, I've seen, Lynn was one of the departments I looked at, and there's several others. I think Eastern, there was, I saw, they're recruiting, actively recruiting. And, and, and we're losing officers, you know, for reasons, that's why the contracts, we've been working on the contracts to try and, you know, to make sure, you know, we're taking care of our employees. But, but, so you will be able to actively recruit.
So that's one thing that we talked about, the chief and the town, is having them actually assist us in recruiting. We can go to job fairs, college job fairs, military job fairs. Like, we can go get candidates that are possibly better qualified, probably better qualified. And not only is that a short-term fix, but if we can get people who are going to retire here, it's a long-term fix, and actually benefits everybody in the long run, more experienced officers. So, I mean, that's, I agree. Like, I think it's something that is extremely important to do at this moment.
I think at the end of the day, too, we have to, the town of Plymouth has to be, we should be the model police department for the area. We need to make sure that we compete against other towns. Some towns, yes, their income's higher. But to bring people in, we should be the model police department for this area. And I think that this is a step, I know that this is a step towards making us a better police department. And the quality of officers that are going to come here, town of Plymouth has everything. Anything you can want. I grew up, you know, my father in the police department. I grew up, you know, my father in the police department, I looked up to this entire town. All I ever wanted to do was work on this police department. I'm here, now I want to make a change. I think this is a change that this town needs at this timeframe to like, you know, work towards the direction of bringing officers back in, getting more people here so that these guys are safer on the road patrolling around. I drive a desk now, but you know, they're on the road patrolling, get more officers here to protect the town, to help the people in the community and do our job more efficiently. So that's, that's my stance on it.
Mr. Mahoney?
Chief. So you had, you had a slide up there that indicated, you rattled off like 10 communities that have recently opted out.
Yep.
You mentioned Carver and I think. So down to 106, I believe?
Yes, 106.
Yeah, so is this a significant enough trend? That this is drawing attention at the state level? Is somebody?
Yeah.
Is our, is our state delegation looking at this? I mean, so if this continues, you're going to, I mean, you can see probably in the next couple of years, you might drop under 100 and you're approaching 75, 50.
Yes.
Is the state just not doing anything right now or they, they understand that something's going on?
So the state, last summer, I believe, realized that something was going on. They initiated some reforms that took effect in December in civil service. And some of the reforms, I think the intent was to ease the recruitment process. They allowed, or they, they now allow 50% of your vacancies now to be hired off the civil, non-civil service wise. But there's, there's a number of catches to do that. You need to come up, you need to develop a long, a five-year MOA with the state. There's certain restrictions of who you can hire, or where you can hire from. We had a meeting in Duxbury back in February about the new changes in, out of the room full of the police and fire chiefs, we walked out of that room more confused than ever of how the process was going to work. They're, they're looking also to adjust the residency requirements now. Right now, we call for resident, we get a residence list, so we get the list of Plymouth residents who have taken the exam. That's the list that we exhausted last fall. We can request an outside or a non-resident list, which in my experience, we do, when you do hire non-residents, we, we hire them, train them, pay them for a while, then when the hometown job opens up, they're gone. So we really don't get our bang for the buck. What they're proposing in, and they haven't developed a process yet now, is a regional list. Within certain mileage of town borders, you can, you can consider them residents. But based upon chiefs that I've spoken to, the best course of action is to get out, get out of civil service. Because it addresses the whole bigger picture as well, the promotional process and the, the come of some promotional process that comes along with it. But they did realize that they had issues, they tried to make some fixes. To my, to my knowledge, they really didn't ask us for our opinions or what needed to be done. And so we're here today.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board?
I just want to say I, I support it. I've talked a lot about it with you all, all three years. And I think it's a quality of life issues, even for our officers that are here. You know, when somebody's out or if you ever shot three men on, say, this shift right now, what do you do? You tell three people they have to come in, no?
Right, well, you typically hold them over.
Exactly.
Right now, officers coming to work, you know, already with the mindset, they're not going home for 16 hours.
And common sense tells you that people that are tired, make poor decisions, it's just part of the game. So I fully support this and I thank you all for supporting it and working it out. And hopefully things will get, you know, be good. We had issues in our fire department a few years ago, my tenure here. And we tweaked this and fixed that and they're up and running good. So you all have my support, you always have. And let's get it to where it should be for everybody's sake, including the residents.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. Anyone wishing to speak on the public comment? Somebody online, Jade? Okay.
Hi, Mark Polsonelli, precinct one. I appreciate the presentation being given again tonight considering, I'm sure a lot of people weren't able to tune into Friday's meeting. So I really appreciate the board having the chief back to do that again. At that Friday meeting, I think it was Friday, I had kind of listed three pieces of information I'd like to see from the board make public or put out to the public to help voters come to a decision on that particular ballot question. I didn't hear specific answers to those questions tonight, so I'll just repeat them just in case. Could you make public the draft policies that were discussed in the presentation regarding recruitment and hiring disciplinary action? You know, we kind of know what we're getting with civil service. So if we're out of the civil service, I think it's important for people to know what those policies would be if we were to leave civil service. The other, or the second piece was, do we have or can we get any data from nearby or similar towns that have left civil service, you know, somewhat recently? Like to say, talk to Carver, I'm not sure when they left, but I see them on the list. Like the year before you left, we only had five interested applicants. The year after we left, when that expanded our pool, we had 10, 15, 20, whatever it could be. I think that data would be helpful. And the last is, and I did hear some mention of the cost tonight and I appreciate that. But could we get an actual cost analysis of here's what hiring, recruitment, disciplinary action costs today? Because I have to assume some of that is kind of eaten by the civil service in that there's not as much recruiting you have to do when you can only hire off of a certain list and that list is given to you. So I'd assume there'd be some increased costs on the recruitment side. But as the chief or someone who presented, pointed out, there can be a decrease in the amount of time you have to pay somebody to not actually police the streets when they're training in the academy, like you had mentioned. So I'd like to see, you know, is it a net increase, net decrease, or somewhere close to a break even? And those are the three things I'd look to see as I make my decision on how to vote. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on the public comment? Hi, can you hear us? It's Emily Wright.
Hi there, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you so much to the select board for the opportunity to provide public comment. My name is Isabella Gamble and in my day job, I worked to move equitable climate policies forward in Massachusetts. In Boston, I served as a collaborating partner on Boston's 20-year urban forest plan that came out in 2022 and I currently sit on the Boston Tree Alliance. My family also owns a home in Manomet. All comments that I'm offering tonight are solely my own and are commenting on item number five under administrative notes regarding the Arbor Day proclamation and designation of Plymouth as a tree city. I offer two reminders and one comment for the planning board, for this, excuse me, for the select board to consider. Urban foresters and forestry experts know that no amount of tree planting can offset the ecosystem services, community benefits and cultural heritage that existing mature forests provide, like those found at the Pineburn habitat in Plymouth County. Particularly on lots like 71 Hedges Pond Road, which is likely to contain the ancestral burial remains of indigenous groups, as well as significant ecological value for Plymouth County and Massachusetts. I'm not sure how Plymouth can claim to be a tree city when so many parcels of existing mature forests, like 71 Hedges Pond Road, are being clear cut for sand mining, including many parcels within the traditional Great Lot allotment given to the Herring Pond Wampanoag Tribe. With 71 Hedges Pond Road voted forward recently by this select board this year, as well as the zoning board of appeals as recently as last week, I ask the select board, at what point will Plymouth truly act on being a tree city? Another reminder is that tree planting campaigns often fail because forestry experts know that new plantings often struggle to survive past the first three years. Mayor Menino in Boston made a promise to plant 100,000 trees almost 20 years ago and that never came close to meeting a goal. As someone whose family owns a home in Plymouth and who works on urban forestry policies, I'm ashamed at the blatant greenwashing that Plymouth is demonstrating tonight. You cannot claim to be a tree city for good marketing purposes whilst simultaneously clear cutting mature forest for sand mining development, going against the wishes of the traditional indigenous stewards of this land. If Plymouth truly wants to honor Arbor Day and fulfill its duty as a tree city, then I would strongly recommend halting any further development projects that require clear cutting of mature forest land in Plymouth County. And recommend working in partnership with local tribes and native groups to implement a more holistic approach to sustainable forestry management, prioritizing the conservation of old growth and mature forests, including at the Community Pocket Park that was mentioned earlier, where the, the intent is to remove mature old trees in, in place of new plantings. Thank you so much for your time and your consideration.
Anyone else, Clay? No? I was going to say Clay, Jade. Sorry about that. Town managers, oh, we got one more. I'm sorry.
Steve Lyden, precinct 17. Mr. Quinzel, you brought up about police officers working 16 hours. They do get stressed, they do get tired and it's not a good way. And the cost of having a police officer work 16 hours, now you're paying them overtime. So it's more expensive to pay police officers overtime and they're not as efficient when they're tired than it would be to hire new officers. And to hire new officers on civil service, I think is a great, getting out of civil service is a great idea. I have faith in what the chief has to say and I would support this vote when it goes to town, when it goes on the ballot. And as far as the last speaker, I'm sorry Bud, you lost it to ZBA. If you have any problems, it's not with this board. You would take your case to the land court or get Mrs. Sheen to file a lawsuit for you. She's good at it. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing? I know who you are.
Ever Malaguti, precinct two. I do want to just comment on the Arbor Day Tree City USA. I believe that our former superintendent of parks, Ted Bubbins, and our current one, Nick Farial, have done an excellent job of actually adhering to the proclamation of a tree city USA and even following even beyond the minimum statutes attributed within that. I've looked at it over time and time again, but I'm not fluent in it. But I would ask that the previous commenter and that actually reach out to them if they have concerns on that because they've actually have done exempl, an exemplary job at maintaining the stature to keep us in a tree city for well over two decades. Another part that I'd like to state is a positive note. Last week, I had attended a concert at Memorial Hall. I saw Mr. Blitzer there helping with security. And it was the LeAnn Rimes concert and it was a very well-attended, very well-behaved concert. And the people that were new to going to Memorial Hall with the new security features, it went very smoothly. I had to empty my pockets a few different times to get through it without dropping everything. But it was very well done. The staff was very professional, very friendly and very helpful for people that were new to that. And I would just like to state that we need more of this coming. It's helping a lot with not just the tourism and the economic vitality of the downtown and the town alike, but it's a great opportunity to help bring more small-scale venues of national artists to the attention for people that can't always go to the cities or to other states to attend these type of events. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on the public comment? Jade, we, we did. Okay, town managers report, please.
All right, good evening. I had a couple of slides, so that's why I'm at the podium this evening. But before I get into the slides, as part of the town's informational campaign regarding the civil service question for May 17th ballot, starting this Friday, we are going to have this week in Plymouth live. So we've done this a few times. This is when we go into studio, we have like a Zoom type of platform where we talk about an issue. In this case, we'll be talking about civil service with the chief, with the two officers you saw this evening. And it gives others, residents and whoever else wants to dial in, the opportunity to ask questions directly to the chief, to myself and others. So we've done this in the past when we've had bird flu. We had over 30 folks attend for the bird flu live session. So we'll start that this coming Friday to, to provide that information to the community. Our communications coordinator will work on other different platforms, FAQs, things of that nature. And I think after hearing tonight's conversation, it probably makes sense to have a webpage specifically dedicated towards this issue. So folks can go there, see the FAQ, see the videos and other informational material. So getting to the slides, so spring is here and this is construction season. So there's a number of construction updates I want to provide. And as you can see from this slide here, this is the old Harbor Master building. This building has been left vacant for over five years since they opened the maritime facility, I believe in 2020, 2021. So the board back in December approved approximately $30,000 of opera funds to improve this building and make some renovations. Primarily, the renovations will be made to the outside of the building. You can see they're already starting that work, new shingles, new roof, new windows, things of that nature. So once complete, we plan to relocate some of the operations that are currently taking place on the town wharf to this building. We are expecting this building hopefully to be completed within the next six to eight weeks. So this is, so this is just a schematic design of something that I just want to bring to the board's attention, see if I can get the light. So Mr. Gould was in before the board, I want to say last fall time period. He talked about the current design plan for this side, this side of Town Wharf Way. A new boardwalk, major pedestrian improvements, improvements to the seawall. That's currently under design. We plan on going to the Seaport Council for grant funding down the road. But this project here is probably two, at least two years away, it could be three years away. But what's happening on this side of the road, our DPW, in particular, James Downey, is working on more pedestrian improvements. So about a year and a half ago, the select board renegotiated the lease agreement to the Shanty Rose. Part of that, and so you, if you go down there, you'll see that they tore down the old Shanty Rose. They are now currently constructing a two-story structure. Part of that lease agreement, we had said to the Shanty Rose, if the town ever in the future decides to put sidewalks and make improvements on this side of Town Wharf Way, we want to work with you to bear those costs. So there was a site visit, Mr. Janeo led that site visit last week. We're working with the Shanty Rose. So the, the whole goal, and we hope it is going to take place in the next four to six weeks, you'll start to see a sidewalk being constructed from what is now Tavern on the Wharf across this way in front of Shanty Rose. There's a driveway opening right about here. That sidewalk will then continue in front of Cabbie Shack and then it'll connect to the existing sidewalk that's currently there with tree planting. So I want to bring this to the board's attention because there's a lot of activity that's taking place down there currently and in the future. And surely we'll make substantial pedestrian and public safety improvements on that area. So I'll keep the board posted on that. In addition to that, I just wanted to let the board know that the old Station 7, Zero Spooner Street, we, we put out to bid. And then there has been a bid award that's been made to an individual for $75,000. So we'll be working with the closing on that. This was a commitment the board had made back in 2022 to try to look at properties that had been sitting vacant and, and get those off for future economic development purposes in real estate revenue. So this building has been sold. We'll have a closing probably in the next two months. And so we'll be looking forward to those improvements on that structure. two months, um, and so we'll be looking forward to those improvements on that structure. I just wanted to let the board know that we had six, uh, sorry, nine graduates from the Stowe Fire Academy took place last Friday, um, and, uh, the fire department, even with these new nine graduates, still will have three current vacancies. We'll be looking to put on another class in the next six months, uh, thereabouts. Uh, as a, as a announcement, uh, those businesses that are interested in pockets, um, there'll be a deadline for May 13th, so, um, after May 13th, we won't be able to plan for installing pockets. So again, May 13th, for any restaurant that's interested in a pocket for this summer season. Um, as far, again, back to construction, uh, starting next week, uh, Tuesday, April 22nd, um, we will start to see the halfway, halfway Pond Road and Long Pond Road intersection start to begin. Uh, message boards will be put out this week, uh, in that area, so the neighbors are aware of, um, that construction. That construction will only take place for about a week. Um, that's mostly, uh, land clearing and widening on the road, um, and the reason they're doing it next week is because next week is school vacation, so they figure they can get that phase out immediately. They'll stop until school ends in June and then restart that project. Again, uh, working with DPW staff, in particular, and, uh, Division of Engineering, on creating a webpage specifically dedicated to that project. I know there's a lot of eyes on that project, um, uh, given the neighbors', um, concerns. Um, as far as Water Street, so the sewer interceptor project, the DPW was here back in early February, talked about a restart of that project, uh, this spring. That's not going to take place. So I want to say that again, the restart of the sewer interceptor project on Water Street will not take place this spring. We have a commitment from Northern Construction for them to come back in December, and so again, as we get closer to that, uh, time period, uh, we'll be having, uh, conversations in the community, specifically with the Abuddos. But again, just want folks to know that we're not going to do any construction on Water Street in the spring and the summer. Speaking of more construction, um, the Route 80 sidewalk, uh, project will begin. Um, so this was a project that was approved at a town meeting in 2022 at a cost of about $1.5 million. This project, the sidewalk, will take place from Commerce Road to Christian Road. Again, the permits have been issued by Mass DOT, given that's a state road, uh, and so you'll start to see construction in the next couple of weeks on the Route 80 sidewalk project. The dog park is, uh, nearing its end. We're hoping to have a ribbon cutting on June 1st and have an opening, uh, thereabouts. Uh, the cemetery, as you all know, was approved at a town meeting, uh, last year, and that is going out to bid in this May, so we'll start to see construction, the new cemetery and the Route 80 Carter as well. Moving on to Health and Human Services, um, as reported in the past, the Arise Program, which is the program that was invented by Health and Human Services, um, they now have opened up their RFP process. They are awarding grants up to $60,000 from, for agencies who, um, are looking to mitigate, uh, fatal and non-fatal overdoses here in our community. That RFP process will close on May 1st. So again, RFP process is open now, will close on May 1st. An interesting, um, pilot program that will take place, folks will notice, at Plymouth Beach this year, uh, we're instituting pay stations, working with PGDC, uh, and so instead of having an individual, one of our seasonal's collecting money at the, um, at the booth when you enter Plymouth Beach, uh, that will no longer take place, uh, you will have to pay to park, uh, with pay stations like you'd see in the downtown area. And so our seasonal staff will be mostly directing traffic to proper parking locations and then monitoring the, monitoring those, uh, vehicles to ensure that they paid. So again, that's a pilot program this year, uh, we're hoping it works. And then I have just two more quick updates. Um, April 26th is the Herring Festival, uh, and the rain date for the Herring Festival will be April 27th. Also on, uh, April 26th, uh, we're doing tree and brush debris drop-off at 131 Camilla Drive at the wastewater treatment plant. Again, this is just for, uh, brush and tree debris that'll take place on two days, uh, Saturday, April 26th, and then again on Sunday, April 27th. Pending any questions, that's all I have.
Mr. Blitzer?
You, you've been a busy guy.
It's construction season.
There was a lot, so I got a few questions. The shanty, isn't that one-story? I know it's on stilts, is that why you're calling it two-story?
I believe it's a two-story structure. Yes.
I thought they changed to one-story. I haven't been down there.
I was down there today, I look like a two-story structure, but I, I mean, I have to go back on the plans.
They put it up on pilings.
Right. I know they have an outside deck, maybe that's the second level.
Yeah, okay. Uh, second, the shack, uh, the, the old Harbor Master, what are we doing with it? Is that out to bid or?
So that's a good question. So the plan right now is because of the, the current design that Mr. Gould is working on right here, right in this section here is the, the, the ticket booth for the Captain John. Um, that operation, that service is going to be displaced because of the redesign and reconstruction. So we're talking to the folks that own the Captain John to co-locate their, um, fuel dock and their ticket booth seals in the old Harbor Master Building. So, because we need to make room for this, this, these new improvements over here.
So move the fuel that's right next to the store there, move that over?
Right. So, so you can't see it on this, but over here is, is the, is the harbor, the old Harbor Master Building. That's also where boats come in to fuel, the boats come in over here to fuel up. So it makes sense to
Yeah.
co-locate what is happening. You got the fuel pumps, the, the fuel purchasing takes place in this building, you got the ticket booths that take place in this building, so it makes sense to co-locate both of those operations in this building right here.
Smart.
And then we'll free up that space for those infrastructure improvements right on Town Wharf Way.
So then the, the fires, the old fire station, I thought that was going to be a, the Fire Union and a museum and
Uh, so
They were going to maintain the 9/11.
It was a bit, it was a public bid process, and, um, the most advantageous bid went to the, the awardee of $75,000. I have been told that, uh, he is interested in working with the Fire Association and giving them space for that building. So I think it appears on the surface that it would win.
What was the price for that?
$75,000.
For the building?
For the building.
I thought the, I thought, what was the price that it went on it? Was, I thought it was a, a lot more than $75,000. That was the only bid?
There was, there was one that was less than that.
To buy it?
The highest bid was $75,000.
Wow.
Is this used in that building?
No, I know, but
It's contaminated. They had, they had gone out to bid a few years ago, and they had received a bid award for $200,000 until the award, the person that was going to acquire realized of all the contamination that's in there. There's PFAS in the soil, there's other contaminants in the building, so there's, there's, um, significant, and I would say six, you know, six figures worth of, um,
Okay.
remediation has to take place in that building.
Then the last thing in the Plymouth Beach with the, the parking, are they going to direct them into spaces? Because there's no, there're not lanes.
So seasonal staff, our seasonal staff will be directing them into parking spaces.
So they're going to have to be there and direct them because
That's right. Not PGDC, seasonal staff.
No, 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 I, I know, because instead of them taking, charging, they'll be at least parking, because if not, with the, with the dirt, it'll be out of control.
Yep. So the, the seasonal staff that normally would be operating in the booth will be working the parking lot.
So we'll probably get, be able to get more cars in there.
We'll find out this summer, it's a pilot program.
Well, I bet if you have somebody directing you, you'll get more cars in there, so I guarantee it. I did the Cape, Cape Guard Coliseum, I did that a hundred years ago, so anyway, good.
You all set, Charlie? Okay, anybody else? I, I just have one, quick one, on, uh, what about the deal with Sandy's now? Because I know, just, have you got to that? I know they used to get like a pass, right? And go out there, have dinner?
That operation, I'd have to double-check how that, you know, how that unfolds, but that's not going to change.
Oh, that's what I meant, but they're going to be able to do that?
I believe there's specific
Whatever it is, I don't know what it is.
Parking spaces for Sandies. Yeah.
Okay. And, uh, just one quick one, I don't know if I brought this up before, but in the Plymouth Industrial Park, there's like a bus station or a waiting station, and there's trash all around it all the time on the ground. And I have picked it up, and I know the Plymouth Trash Lady's been in the call, but is there anything we can get about, is that like out of our jurisdiction with a DPW?
Yeah, so is it any specific, specific one, the location?
It's the one right on Industrial Park, right before
There's only one? Okay, there's only one stop?
Yeah, by Dr. Katamar, so
The bend, right?
Yeah, it's a little gla, yeah. You know, but you can see it, it's all around there, it's just
Okay.
I don't know if it's within the route, but that's all I have.
Send a message to the
Anything from anyone else? Thank you, Derek. Thank you, Silvio. Select Board discussion, new business? All business? Wow. Motion to adjourn. So moved? All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous, thank you for watching, have a good week.